Good evening, everyone. We will call the City Council meeting in order for April 1, 2013. First order of business is the roll call.
Sasso. Clayton. Nordstrom. Scott. Peterson. Doyle. Lewis. Roberts. Wright. Duranty. We have quorum.
We have a quorum, and now we'll recognize Dr. Brian Winston from Synagogue of the Hills.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Brian Winston. I represent Synagogue of the Hills. We are the Region's Reform Jewish Congregation. Our synagogue is in Rapid City. We are thirty-three family units. We proudly trace our local roots back to 1876 in Deadwood. On behalf of my congregation, I wish to thank the Rapid City Mayor's Office for issuing this proclamation in observance of Yom HaShoa, Holocaust Remembrance Day, which falls Sunday evening, April 7th. I will read selections from our prayer book taken from the Yom HaShoa service. I will conclude by reading names of the concentration camps, the death camps, and would ask you all to repeat those names after me. We begin with silence, the silence of death, the silence after destruction. There are times when songs falter, when darkness fills life, when martyrdom becomes a constellation of faith against the unrelieved black of space about us. There are no words to reach beyond the edge of night, no messenger to tell the full tale. There is only silence, the silence of Job, the silence of the six million, the silence of memory. Let us remember them as we link our silences. Blessed is the match consumed in kindling flame. Blessed is the flame that burns in the secret fastness of the heart. Blessed is the heart with the strength to stop its beating for honor's sake. Blessed is the match consumed in kindling flame. If the prophets broke in through the doors of night and sought an ear like a homeland, ear of mankind, overgrown with nettles, would you hear if the voice of the prophets blew on flutes made of murdered children's bones and exhaled airs burnt with martyrs' cries? If they build a bridge of old men's dying groans, ear of mankind occupied with small sounds, would you hear? Fully compassionate God on high, to our six million brothers and sisters murdered because they were Jews, grant clear and certain rest with you in the lofty heights of the sacred and pure, whose brightness shines like the very glow of heaven. Source of mercy, forever enfold them in the embrace of your wings. Secure their souls in eternity. Adonor, they are yours. They will rest in peace. Amen. O se shalom vim romav, hu yas se shalom alenu, vau kol yisrael vimru. Amen. Auschwitz. Lodes. Ponar. Babiyar. Medanek. Birkenau. Kovno. Yanouska. Notswaller Stroll. Tureseanstadt. Buchenwald. Treblinka. Vilna. Bergen-Belsen. Mauthausen. Dachau. Minsk. Warsaw.
Thank you. We'll now move on to adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes to the night's agenda? Motion by Louis, second by Doyle, to approve the agenda as is. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We now have the Holocaust Days of Remembrance proclamation. This is something that our nation has been doing for many years on an annual basis, and Holocaust Remembrance Week is coming up next week. And so, we're going to read a proclamation in just a moment. Before we do that, I would like to cue up a brief video from the National Holocaust Memorial Museum.
Memory is what shapes us. Memory is what teaches us. We must understand that's where our redemption is.
I think the important thing to understand about this cataclysmic event is that it happened in the heart of Europe. Germany was respected around the world for its leading scientists, its physicians, its theologians. It was a very civilized, advanced country. It was a young democracy, but it was a democracy. And yet, it descended not only into social collapse, but World War, and eventually mass murder.
A strong man came to power in Germany whose ideas were that Germany has to create a national community which would include only the Aryan race, which he considered superior, and all the people who did not belong to the Aryan race could be eliminated. With planning and propaganda, he was able to convince most of the German people to go along with him, insensitive to what happened to the Jews who had basically been their former neighbors. And he managed to build concentration camps and killing centers and finally, gas chambers to annihilate six million Jews. And at the same time, also millions of others murdered in a systematic, government-sponsored way.
And it's made up of so many people who participated in different ways, who made it possible.
People who follow orders without question. Bystanders who watch and do nothing. Ordinary men and women simply going with the flow.
The events and the results of the Holocaust were so devastating. It was an extreme that we can barely imagine.
So mind-boggling that the temptations to forget and to repress, to just put it out of mind, are very real.
But we remember. We remember because it is an unthinkable scar on humanity. We need to understand what human beings are capable of.
We gather today to mourn the loss of so many lives and celebrate those who saved them, honor those who survived, and contemplate the obligations of the living.
Days of Remembrance is our nation's annual commemoration of the Holocaust. This time that was both a blight on the history of humanity, but also a shining moment for the people who were brave enough to put an end to it.
We are remembering first and foremost, all the victims. And that is not only the Jewish victims, but there were many non-Jewish victims. Of course, the Jews were the primary target.
The millions of innocent people, including my family and friends, who were killed because they were of the wrong religion, because they had no means of protecting themselves.
It's also important to remember the rescuers. These were people who risked not only their own lives, sometimes the lives of their family, to save a fellow human being. And we also remember our American soldiers who were fighting to win World War II, and in the course of that liberated these concentration camps.
Those that arrived at the camps in 1945 and were just horrified by what they saw.
That was a huge task for the American soldiers to help bring humanity back to these people who had been dehumanized for years, to give them medical care.
Looking back allows us to understand how important it is for us to serve in a country where we have the strength and the might and the will to defend those that are defenseless.
So Days of Remembrance is an opportunity for us to remember the suffering that was and the efforts that were made to put an end to such suffering. And it's a call to conscience today in our world to make sure that we aren't the silent one standing by contributing to the suffering of others.
In 1945, at the end of the war, I would have thought that there would never be another Holocaust, that the world was so shocked by what had happened, that the world would not permit that. And yet, you see what happened in Bosnia? What happened in Rwanda? What happened in Darfur? So there are still millions of people being persecuted because of their ethnicity.
It's really a moral challenge to us to do more in our own lives when we confront injustice or hatred or genocide.
Those who suffered and died in the Holocaust, we can honor them today by not being silent. Remembering ties the past and the present together with a powerful, simple thread. This is not right.
The important thing is that one should not become indifferent to the suffering of others, that one should not stand by and just raise one's hands and say, "There's nothing I can do. I'm just a little one person." Because I think what every one of us does matters. It's not enough to curse the darkness of the past. Above all, we have to illuminate the future. And I think that on the day of remembrance, the most important thing is to remember the humanity that is in all of us, to leave the world better for our children and for posterity.
When we were putting this proclamation together tonight, my office tried to find a local first-generation Holocaust survivor, and we had difficulty doing so. Most of the survivors are now gone. But I knew someone well who experienced it firsthand. His name was Jack Vandergeest. He was an author. He wrote the book called Was God on Vacation? And he was a resident of our community for more than five decades. His father was murdered in Vuk't. His mother was sent to Ravensbruck, which is where Corrie Ten Boom went. And his mother survived, but she was never the same. And Jack was sent to Buchenwald. And he was sent there because his family was part of the Dutch Resistance, and they were also hiding Jewish people. On March 2, 2009, Rapid City and the state of South Dakota recognized Jack on the sixty-sixth anniversary of his extraordinary escape from Buchenwald, which took place on March 3, 1943. And he died here in Rapid City three days later. Go ahead and hit it.
It is not easy to lay still for one minute. You try to lay still for eleven hours in a pile of dead bodies, and you have to remember what will go through your mind when you lay there. And finally, that I could be able to jump up. I didn't expect that after laying there for eleven hours, but I made it. There was just one German guard walking around a pile of dead bodies. I was able to jump up and kill that son of a gun. I took his uniform, and just at that time, a truck came, and they said, "I was in uniform." They said, "Gehen Sie nach Weimar?" In other words, "Are you going to Weimar?" Yeah. He thought I was going to the girls and the beer and the booze, and I didn't mind that. So, yeah. So I got at the camp gate, and I was lucky, I was the only one on board of that truck. I was sitting in the front, and of course, in uniform, and I took his rifle too, and made sure that I had a weapon with me. And he looked at me, and he said, "Okay." And I went out of camp. Then I came at the second gate, the same thing. And I thought, gosh, I never knew it was so easy to get out of a death camp. But it was all my luck. When I came out, I came in a farmer's house, and the farm woman at that time asked me, "What can I do for you?" He says, "I'm hungry and I'm lost." She said, "No, why don't you come in?" Later on, when I talked to the family, I found out that this woman knew that I was an escapee of Buchenwald. And he never said a word because he laid his own life on the line, because if the Gestapo would have found out, that she would have helped me, eating and giving a place, she would have been killed too. So I used to show you, I don't hate all the German people, just the Nazis. And believe me, I took care of a lot of them. They cannot speak against me anymore. But I have lived in all this time here in Rapid City. It is over fifty-five years now. It is a good time. It is a good place. When we look on the coast, what's coming up now in New York, they can have it. They can have it, what they have in California. And we're sitting here with sixty, seventy degrees, and we just look up and like there's nothing going on. So I love Rapid City and the people in it. Thank you very much.
And Paul Priest and Ann, if you would go ahead and come up. We also looked for a liberator, veteran who helped liberate the camps. And Paul Priest, although he did not liberate the camp, any of the camps, he did come into the Notswaller Struthoff camp in France shortly after they were liberated. And Paul Priest is now a resident of this area, and he's also the crossing guard for my daughters at Wilson Elementary and takes good care of them. Paul, if you would come up and say a few words about your experiences visiting Notswaller Struthoff. Paul?
Well, what little you saw on this film here today was not very much. All of the programs that I ever go out and talk to different groups and everything, that's one article we're trying to steer away from because it's too gruesome to talk about. If you figure out how many camps was in that Germany and France and Poland, here they are. Here's a list of them. And the one that I went into and stopped into was six months after that camp had been liberated and locked up. But the city people were still there burying the dead bodies. Because when the war was done and they liberated these camps, there was a lot of these towns over there where they had the city people that lived next to it, said they just didn't know this was happening. But I'll tell you one thing. If you got within five miles of any one of these camps, you could smell it. It was death. And it's nothing to brag about, it's nothing to dream about. The only thing I've stuck by in all of my talks and everything, if it wouldn't have been that war, us winning the war, that might have been happening here. So the younger generation should think about that and keep this United States and world free. That's about all I can say about it. I don't like to talk about it too much, but this camp we was into was a lot of them. I have pictures on my photo album of the camp, but not very many of them, and everybody has seen them, says it's just something that's out of this world. So it's hard to believe unless you see some of the pictures that are actually happening. So that's about all I could say for it, and I appreciate anybody that survived that camp, and I'd love to talk to them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. And now I have an executive proclamation. Whereas the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jews by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, at least six million were murdered. Gypsies, people with disabilities, and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, religious, or national reasons. And millions more children, homosexuals, Christians, Jehovah's Witnesses, captured allies, including many Americans, Soviet prisoners of war, political dissidents also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas, the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas, we the people of the city of Rapid City should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, tyranny, and stand up to the presence of the dark soul of totalitarianism. And whereas, we the people of the city of Rapid City should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom and a just society, and remember those in our community who survived the Holocaust or stood up to the Nazis or joined our American and Allied forces in defeating the Nazis and liberating the death camps. And whereas, the National Days of Remembrance have been set aside all across the country and for the people of Rapid City to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as to reflect on the need for the respect of all peoples. Whereas pursuant to an act of Congress in 1980, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the Days of Remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 7, through Sunday, April 14, 2013, including the Days of Remembrance known as Yom Yeshua on April 8, 2013. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, April 7 through Sunday, the 14th as Days of Remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we, as citizens of Rapid City, should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Thank you very much. And now I'd like to recognize Ann Stanton, who's a dear friend of mine, and she was also a dear friend of Jack and Ann Vandergeest, and she would like to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Mayor Sam. This is an extraordinary moment, and this proclamation, as far as I know, has never been equaled in Rapid City. And I don't know if this is being done in any other city around the country, but it's certainly an outstanding event. When I was a small child, kids would go to camp in the summer. It was something we looked forward to. It was a way to get out of the city, to play and to row boats and do things that we never could get to do in the city. It wasn't until I grew up that I found out that there was another kind of camp for children my age. There was very little known about this while I was growing up. And it wasn't until quite a bit later that the events started to become revealed. And it was so horrific, so horrific, that people had to, they just had to say, "There's a limit. There's, I can't see anymore, I can't do anymore. It's too, it makes me so emotional." But it was a terrible thing that happened. And as far as I'm concerned, any Jew, any descendant, any of our ancestors, my parents, my children, any one of us is a Holocaust survivor. The only reason we're here is because we were outside of Hitler's reach. So I'm very thankful. And I'm thankful to Mayor Sam for recognizing this and acknowledging it and remembering it and remembering Jack and Ann Vandergeest, wonderful people.
I have one more presentation before we close. Before Ann Vandergeest passed away in August of 2010, she gave, you can stay up here for a minute, she gave my wife and I a box of Jack's books. And what's extraordinary is, is Jack escaped Buchenwald on March 3, 1943, in the early morning hours, and years... And years later, he got his, he had, he found his death certificate to prove that he was there, and the death certificate is printed in the book. Two days or three days after his proclamation on the 66th anniversary of his escape, I received a phone call, and I still remember the phone ringing. It was 5:01 in the morning, and it was Ann Vandergeest. And she said, "Sam, Jack has just died. I'm down at Regional, would you come down?" I came down. It was room number 12. I'll never forget it. The nurse came in and confirmed the time that he had been declared at 4:59 a.m. And I had goosebumps all the way down my spine because I remember Jack specifically telling me that it was just before the 5:00 a.m. roll call at Buchenwald on March 3, 1943, that he had, quote, "died," and then was thrown into that pile of dead bodies where he laid there all day long. And sixty-six years and two days later, in Rapid City, South Dakota, he died again at 4:59 a.m. Anyway, I have, on behalf of our community and my family, I would like to present the synagogue with one of Jack's books and also the CD audio edition in Jack's own voice. Dr. Winston.
I would like to echo Ann's sentiments. We thank you, you know, on behalf of the Jewish community here in the Black Hills for recognizing Yom HaShoah and these Days of Remembrance. We are proud members of the Rapid City community and our sincere thanks.
Thought it was fitting that we remember what happened in the Holocaust, and I think it's also fitting that today is April Fool's Day because there are some people around the world who actually think that the Holocaust was a joke. And obviously, the evidence is overwhelming that it was very real. And if it happened in Europe, it can happen anywhere. And it really wasn't that long ago, if you stop and think about it. We're very grateful for our Jewish friends here in Rapid City. And we want to thank you for coming tonight, Dr. Winston. All right, now is the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. I do not have any general public comment items. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment for items 2 through 48. Can we have a motion, please? Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts to open public comment on items 2 through 48. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I have one speaker request form, and this is on item 46, and we'll recognize Jean Kessloff.
I apologize, I have a little bit of a cold, so it's a little tough to talk. My name is Jean Olsen Kessloff. I am here as a concerned citizen and homeowner of a 103-year-old house in the West Boulevard Historic District. I am also a member of the Rapid City Historic Preservation Commission and Historic Rapid City. I have eighteen original windows in my house. While I appreciate Mr. Freytag's efforts to find a solution to Ms. Welch's window issue, it is required that the Rapid City Historic Preservation Commission follow the Secretary of Interior Standards in their reviews and recommendations for the 11-1 review process. It is required of us per the certified local government agreement from which we received our federal funding and the Memorandum of Joint Powers Agreement. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, Mr. Freytag pursued the retrofit before legal and finance met last week, resulting in incorrect information to the city and the homeowner about the process. So, how do we keep our historic houses warm while being energy efficient, reduce our carbon footprint, and retain our historic fabric, all at the same time? The standards address this. They also address factors that add to heat loss that we sometimes don't think of. Studies indicate that most of the issues lie with the ceiling, walls, floors, and plumbing and ducting, in that order, while only 10% is windows. But windows usually get all of the blame. Achieving the same energy efficiency in your historic home as new construction is an unrealistic goal. And attempting to do this will result in significant alteration and the loss of historic fabric. Each process must be weighed on its own, excuse me, each project must be weighed on its own. With windows, physical evaluation is the first step. The results that give you your next, the results of that give you your next steps, with the bottom line being retrofit. The request for retrofit windows at 1113 Fulton Street was denied for adverse effect by the Rapid City Historic Preservation Commission and State Office of History in Pier because they were determined to be in good shape and there was no rot. We then must find prudent and feasible alternatives to replacing them. Prudent and feasible basically means, what is the best choice for this project? What we must consider when addressing the, what, excuse me, what must we consider when addressing those alternatives? Energy efficiency is one of the factors, but it cannot dominate the issue. The prudent and feasible alternatives listed by the Preservation Commission were, number one, Bob Yap's Window Restoration Guide. Bob Yap is a preservation consultant, teacher, speaker, and restoration expert that addresses fundamental solutions for historic housing renovation. He is a window restoration specialist as well. Number two was to research new storm windows. The Office of History in Pier also sent their prudent and feasible alternatives which were attached to the legal and finance and tonight's agenda. The decision before you tonight is to determine if those prudent and feasible alternatives have been explored. If you determine that they have, allowing the windows to be replaced, knowing that your determination will take the house off the National Register of Historic Places as a contributing structure, one of three that we have lost in just the last few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. We do not have any further speaker request forms on items 2 through 48. Would anyone else like to speak on items 2 through 48? On items 2 through 48, I do not have any more public comment request forms for 2 through 48. Seeing none, we have a motion to close public comment. Motion by Doyle, second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on items 2 through 48. If any council members or staff members like to remove items for separate consideration, please hit your light. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item number 24. We do have another group of School of Mines students here to do a quick presentation on recycling.
And we'll go to Ron Sasso.
Item 46, please.
Okay, so far we have 24 and 46. Jerry Wright. Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 47.
Okay, we have 24, 46, and 47. Anything else? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the balance of consent. Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle to approve items 2 through 48 with the exceptions of 24, 46, and 47. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number 24, the benefits of recycling. Charity?
If I may, real quick. Dr. Bening, did you want us to fill out surveys again?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fernando Brazão. This is Adisha and Eric Vick. And tonight, we are going to present for you the Rapid City Recycling Project. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here to watch this presentation. And I want to say that I'm from Brazil, Adisha's from India, so if you have any trouble with our accent, our English, go ahead and ask, okay? To start our presentation, I have here a quote by Theodore Roosevelt that I'm going to read for you. "Two wastes, to destroy our natural resources, to skin and exhaust the land instead of using it so as to increase the usefulness, will result in undermining the days of our children, the very prosperity which you all by rights to hand out to them." So in summary, it's saying that we should use more carefully our resources and leave for the next generations the resource that they also need for their development. So let's continue here. Here we have an overview about our presentation. We are going to start talking about recycling, the benefits, the importance. Then we are going to move for our project, do an introduction about the project, show some numbers, some informations, and a graph. And we are going to conclude, summarize the most important things that we said, and do some recommendations, what can be done, what can be improved. And finally, the references. So I'm going to start talking about the importance of recycling. The first point here is that we don't, we don't have infinite resource in our planet. So when we are recycling, we are not using raw materials, and we are leaving for the next generations the resource that they need. The second waste is too obvious. If you are recycling, you are reducing the amount of waste, you are reducing the amount of garbage, and you are also reducing the environmental impacts. The fourth point here is about saving energy. To explain that, I'm going to use an example of aluminum. To produce aluminum from the rock bulk site, you really need a big amount of energy being applied and for a long time. If you are reusing this aluminum, you are saving this energy. That is a big amount. About saving money, we have some products, some materials that are cheaper recycled than new materials. One example is the aluminum. So if a company is using these recycled materials, they are reducing the production costs. And also, if you are a company and you have some used materials, you can sell that and get some profits for the company. The next point is about the greenhouse gas emission. If you are not producing new material, new products, processing them, you are avoiding to emit for the atmospheric carbon. So you are reducing the greenhouse effect. And the last one is about reduced landfill space. If you are reducing the waste, the garbage, you are reducing the space that you need in your landfill, and you can delay to create a new landfill, which is pretty good for the city about investment. Now Adisha's going to talk a little bit more about the project. I'm sorry?
I'm going to talk a little bit about the project background and how we went about completing the project. And first of all, I would like to thank Dr., Mr. Jerry Wright for providing us excellent source of information. It helped us learn much, a lot about Rapid, a lot about Rapid City and how we can make Rapid City a better place to live. And looking at the objectives, our objectives were to relay information to the public and provide suggestions for Rapid City and how we can reduce cost, impacts, and energy. And during this project, we updated information from several resources available on the internet and made what gave results. So in our research project, we updated information and we used the government website for Rapid City. And we also were lucky enough to get information from Mr. Carl Merbach, who works for the Rapid City Solid Based Management Operations. And we assumed a lot of information, looking at the trends. For example, if there was a growth in the consumption of a material, we would look at what rate it's growing, and then we would make an educated assumption. So we, here we have a graph, we, where we, where it shows us the total amount of waste thrown away and how much of it is recycled. The waste materials we have included are PET, which is polyethylene threphthalate, which is used in the, used in water bottles and containers, a lot of consumer packaging products. And the next is steel, and we have two categories for steel, the other one being shredded. And then we have high-density polyethylene. It's also used in, in water bottles, containers, thermoplastic piping systems. And last, we have aluminum cans.
On this slide, we have the current earnings for Rapid City. And we, the way we calculated these numbers, we based them on the previous slide where you saw the differences between the amount of garbage thrown away and the amount recycled. We took the difference there and applied a rate at which Rapid City sells this type of material off to the public and to other cities. We found these rates from Mr. Carl Merbach's spreadsheet that he sent us through email. They had a lot of the, we took averages of the rates that Rapid City sells these materials, and we applied those to the tonnages, and we were able to calculate these numbers right here. These are the current earnings. And right here, we have the potential revenue lost. And the way we calculated this was we took the difference that you saw two slides ago, and using those same rates, we calculated how much money Rapid City potentially could make if they were to recycle 100% of their waste products. It's important to note that these categories that we chose to use are the categories that we had the most accurate information for. We took out some that seemed like they would be outliers just to make it more of a conservative estimate. And you can see here that there is approximately $1.3 million that Rapid City potentially could make or save if 100% were recycled. And this is important, it's important to note from this that it's not taking into account the additional infrastructure that would be necessary and required from the recycling plant. If it were to recycle 100% of Rapid City's garbage, there would be additional expenses there. But this just gives an idea of the potential earnings that could be made. This slide shows those same numbers, but in terms of barrels of oil, just for sake of a comparison or just something for the audience to see. We took that number and we applied the current price of oil at the time of this project, which was $110 per barrel. And as you can see, the different categories have different amounts of oil that they would correspond to based on the savings that could potentially be made. And as you can see, there is almost 12,000 barrels of oil that Rapid City could potentially have if they were to recycle 100% of their garbage. 12,000 barrels of oil equivalent to the money. Right here, we have the potential landfill savings. And this slide is showing the, if we were to recycle 100% of our garbage, the landfill savings that we would have. Currently, there's $59 per ton that the landfill requires to process garbage. So we took, again, those differences from the total garbage thrown away and the total recycled material, and then we applied that $59 per ton rate, and we calculated how much money could be saved just from the landfill if we were to recycle 100% of our garbage. And as you can see, there's 123,000, or 100, yeah, 23,000 approximate per year that could be saved. So in conclusion, if Rapid City were to increase its recycling, this would, of course, reduce costs both in the, for, it, this would reduce costs for the landfill as well as make the city money through the products that could be sold as recycled goods. These savings could be reallocated to other parts of the city, such as roads or buildings, other civic improvements. This would, it would increase the lifespan of the Rapid City landfill, which has been increased greatly from, in the late 80s, it was, it only had about a 10-year lifespan. And today, it's projected to last until 2053, so there's been great improvement there. But if we were to continue recycling, it would only improve more. There are valuable recycling products that the city sells and can continue to sell and sell more of, which makes the city money, reduces environmental impact, of course, through, you don't have to produce virgin materials, which takes down on environmental impact as well as the landfill itself. There's not as much leaching of chemicals into the ground as well as habitat reduction. That doesn't happen if we're not using up landfill space at such a fast rate. And finally, we have a statistic, or we have a little finding at the bottom that we thought was really interesting. If, based on our findings, if we were to recycle 100% of our garbage- If, based on our findings, if we were to recycle 100% of our garbage at the rates that we found, the potential income that we would see would be 63% higher than the current recycling plant operations. So that just kind of shows that it would more than pay for itself, most likely. Couple of recommendations that we thought, we talked a little bit about that we thought could possibly be implemented were, of course, improved awareness. We think that's the most important one. Getting, increasing education and getting people to understand the environmental and the fiscal benefits that the city and that people themselves could see just from recycling. If things were more convenient, it would, of course, be easier for people to recycle. A lot of people, it's hard for them to go out of their way to recycle. So any added convenience is always going to increase the amount of recycling. And we know Rapid City already does quite a bit for convenience. But just always having a mind for convenience and trying to get people to recycle is, we think, the way of the future. And finally, another idea we had was fiscal incentives. We thought perhaps municipal tax benefits, both for companies and for citizens of Rapid City, just as an incentive to recycle, just get people to, people that might be on the edge about recycling, this might be a benefit that could get them to recycle. Here's just a couple of the references that we used for finding our information in addition to Mr. Carl Merbach's spreadsheet. And with that, we'll take any questions from the audience.
Thank you, gentlemen. Charity, you still have a four.
What year do you gentlemen graduate?
I'm graduating in 2015.
I'm graduating in 2015 as well.
2014.
Well, I think the world is going to gratefully embrace you three gentlemen. I'm quite impressed. I wanted to say that I've seen this presentation three times now, and you guys knocked it out of the park. I feel very confident having you entering the working force pretty soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charity, and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Like I told Dr. Bennings, I hope a few of you go into graduate work and do, finish my work. I think this is a good example, Rapid City. Not only is it a city, but as a community of how we can work with our university in many ways. I was privileged to go to this class and visit with him about something that I worked on a good number of years ago. We have a tremendous resource down here, two miles away. They have a great resource about 40 miles northwest of us. We have a branch campus out on Exit 61, same resources. Always a privilege to go to these classes and talk about things and share with them and learn from them, and they learn from us. But I think we, as a community, could do a much better job of interfacing with our universities and utilizing this talent, not only in the faculty, but in their student body, to assist us in many of the decisions that we have to make in our community. We are, by doing so, we're not only training ourselves by listening to this type of information, but we're training them to take on the roles of leaders in our communities in the future. And that's where it's at. So I thank you. And I certainly would discuss in greater detail the findings of the research with my peers, but we'll do that at a council workshop someday because it's way more than you want to spend tonight. So, and thank you, and Jennifer, way to go.
Thank you, Jerry, and we'll go to, we have a motion to acknowledge and a second. We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Laurenti to acknowledge, and we'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Appreciate you bringing this. And I think awareness and the cost value, since I've been on the council, I've been motivated to try to find ways to incentivize people. But I can tell you a dirty little secret up here. You're looking at people that are charged with being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Well, I can tell you guaranteed, every night we have a council meeting, there are cans and bottles that are put into the regular trash, even though we have recycle dispensers well within our reach. So even the people up here that are charged with being good stewards need to be reminded. And it's very unfortunate, and I sometimes task myself taking them out of the trash and put them in the recycle, but I don't always do that. So anyway, thank you for letting me put some people on hot seat here tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Bonnie, and we'll go to Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, since you guys encouraged questions. On your calculations, and you were talking about total recycling, if the rep, if the city of Rapid City totally recycled all of the garbage or refuge that was deposited at the Rapid City facility, does the total refuge fit into each of those categories? Or are there some items or refuge that would not fit into the five categories you listed?
When we talked about the 100% recycling, we were just assuming those categories that we had on there. So all of our numbers were probably conservative, since there was other categories that we didn't take into account, just because according to the numbers we calculated, it didn't seem as realistic as the ones that we put up here.
The five categories you used?
Yeah, these ones were the most accurate, so those are the ones we chose to display.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then, when you converted it in order to give an example to be used on the basis of barrels of oil, is the barrels of oil or the amount that you use based on the oil that would be used in creating those five categories or the amount of refuge of those five categories in the original production?
No, we base it just on the amount of money that could be saved, just in terms of barrels of oil, just as a different way to look at it, I guess.
Oh, okay, so you took the first five categories, and you had the dollar amount, and then you just converted that by dividing by 110, and then you cut out the total number of barrels. Gotcha. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Thank you, Amanda, and we'll go to Ron Sassel. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. And, you know, personally, I think that recycling and being good steward's very important. And actually, Rapid City's water is very, very good. We have excellent water, so just to keep that in mind. And then, another, another point, you know, Alderman Wright, if you ever have the chance to follow him around, he is a recycling magnet. If there's anything down, he picks it up, and he makes sure that it gets recycled. So it's something that, you know, in addition to him starting, starting this up, and he really does practice what he preaches with that. And it's something that I think everybody should do. And really appreciate you bringing this forward and raising more awareness. And obviously, the more people that know, the better shape we're going to be in in the future. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, and we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want to be the only one that didn't speak up here, so you gentlemen did a great job. I just want to let you know, I understand it's probably pretty hard for you to do it at your age, but you did an awesome job, I'm very impressed, so thank you for that, and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Richie Norstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, did you have the opportunity to validate Mr. Wright's data and Mr. Merbach when they presented the information? Did you cross-check and recheck his information?
The information that we got from Mr. Merbach was current, and the information we got from Mr. Wright was from year 2003, I believe. So the project, we just updated the information. There wasn't a real, there wasn't a, we didn't, I guess, cross-check with any other references to see how this looked. I guess we did look at rates based on national rates from other municipalities, and the rates seemed to match up relatively well with other places. But as, as far as the amount of recycled materials went, we didn't cross-reference with any other sources.
Very good, thank you. I appreciate the honesty part of that, you know, because I have to double-check Jerry's work a lot of times. Anyway, I'm teasing now, I'm teasing. So what, the other part of it is, if you gentlemen can continue on this path for your career, one of the things that I'd be very, very interested in, if you have it within your, not so much the skill set, but in your ongoing education part of it, if you have the opportunity to come up with resources or avenues that we can explore for recovering more out of the waste stream, and I'd be very, very interested to see what you can kind of come up with a solution for that. So just recovery would be the next, very important stage of this whole process. And I do want to applaud you and thank you very much for this presentation. Very nice job, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion? The motion is to acknowledge item 24. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 46, Amanda?
Item number 46, to approve the request for the city council to overrule the determination of the Historic Preservation Commission and determine that all feasible and prudent alternatives to the window replacement at 1113 Fulton Street have been pursued, and that all possible planning to minimize harm to the historic property has taken place. I make a motion to approve.
So just to clarify your motion, Amanda, it's a motion to approve the request and overrule the determination?
Correct.
Okay. And we have a second by, seconded by Roberts? And we'll go to Ron Sassel.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this, this issue, I know as it sits before us, on the one hand, looking at it, it looks very reasonable. The, on the one hand, the property owner is trying to come up with a solution that would appear aesthetically similar. The problem that we, we have with this, where the Historic Preservation Committee has denied the request, the state denied the request. And looking at this specific instance, it does not appear to me that all feasible and prudent options have been explored. And a matter of fact, there are quite a few that are listed as options on this. The most important thing that I believe we really need to look at in this is if we approve this exception, this home will no longer be considered historic. It will come off the rolls, even though it will look the same. And then, the other, the other aspect of this is that once it is removed from the historic preservation as, being listed as a historic structure, then in turn, the property owner could, at any later date, make alterations and switch out the windows, which, to whatever they would like. So it really, it radically changes that. And once a historic structure is gone, it is gone. And so that's something I think we really do need to take a good, long, hard look at. Because that's, I believe, what we are doing, and we could be setting a dangerous precedent in this case. As the windows are in good shape or not rotting. And, and basically, it's something that they could be either rehabbed a little bit or with storm windows added, so. And I'll yield the floor, thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure, even at this moment, how I'm going to vote. But I have to say a few things to clear my soul and conscience. This morning, I was standing at Sixth and Main replacing John Adams, and one of our citizens, downtown business, came by, and we were talking about how our downtown area has come back and renovated over the last 30 years. And the comment from that gentleman was that cities that have a town center have a soul. Our community in its historic downtown has a historic center and a historic soul. It's something we all enjoy and cherish. Once it's gone, it is gone. And thank God for people like Lee Geiger and others in the past that worked to protect it and where we are today. I take my hat off to people like Jean Keslov and people who work on the Historic Commission and our staff for almost a thankless job. I mean, it's, it's tough, and I don't know what we can do. I was at the West Boulevard Association meeting last Wednesday night. It was Wednesday night, Thursday night, whatever it was. And the staff from the Historic Commission were there. And I asked if they would come to our council and train us, because here's my dilemma. It says here, "The council finds all feasible and prudent alternatives to the removal and replacement of the windows and replacements have been met," and so forth. I've seen these things about three or four or five times since I've been elected, and I've never yet, I've yet to see what I would call an analysis done by anyone that's presented to us as a council or done by our staff. And I'm not, I guess I'm being critical of all of us. I don't think we've done our homework, I don't think we've done our job right. I read this file, and I respect Mr. Freitag's position, I respect the owners, and yes, it's good windows, and that's why I'm a little, you'll find out how I'm going to vote here in a few minutes, right after I do, after I figure it out. I still got the floor, thank you. I, we need some more direction in the future when these come in. I think we've been real sloppy about it. And I think at times, we make a decision while it doesn't matter much, because it's just one house or one change. But if, if we took that attitude every time this came before us, we would probably have nothing. And we would not have that historic center, we would not have that historic soul. And I think we need to take a real, real hard look at this and, and ask ourselves as a council, not just this issue, but on the future, what are we going to do? Are we going to be willing to just accept some letters back and forth that say this and that and opinions, and cast it off and make a decision on Monday nights based on what? Subjective analysis? We can do better. And I'm not easy with this, and I haven't been easy with ones we've had before. I ask that this council entertain in the near future and accept training from the Historic Commission to get us better prepared to do this job and to help those that are working in this field, the owners, the people on the commission, those that have a strong love and interest for this community, and our staff. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, and we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have questions for both Ms. Keslov and Mr. Freitag, if I may. If you're willing. And I don't know who can answer. I know you're relatively new to the commission. I do have one specific question for you, Bill, if I may. The newsletter from the National Trust for Historic Preservation, is that the premier newsletter for historic preservation, or is there something else? I mean, is this, is this a resource or reference that you guys adhere to frequently? Do you know the answer to that, Ms.?
Well, that's the, the one that the city of Rapid City subscribes to and pays to. And that's the one that this present Historic Commission receives every month.
Okay, and this, the National Trust for Historic Preservation has given the thumbs up to retrofitting, which is what you were, the process of which you were describing to us last week?
That's correct.
Correct, thank you. And how long has the Historic Preservation Commission had authority over windows?
Well, probably for a long time, but the building permit issue, that kind of brings everything to a head. You could do your windows and your siding before, I think, July of last year without a building permit. And so a lot of the times, it just slipped through the cracks. But since the building permit regulations changed, I think now there's more opportunity. They, the people come before the commission more so than before. But the, I think the, to answer your question, prior to July, ever since there's been a Historic Preservation Commission, the, they, the, there should have been an application made, whether there was one or not. Most people didn't, weren't aware of it.
So some of these historic homes that did replace or retrofit even perhaps windows, they're just, and they're still considered contributing if it happened before July?
No, the, here, I'll give you an example. The gentleman that was our, was the chairman of our commission, Pat Roslin, he, he had told me at a commission meeting that he was unaware of it prior to July on some of the stuff and on houses, his own personal house, that he had replaced. I think he had said he'd put his windows in or his siding in, and that hadn't, he hadn't got a permit, hadn't went before the commission and didn't know, know anything about it. And the components that he put in wouldn't, wouldn't have been correct. If you were going to split hairs on it, they wouldn't have been correct. On, on whether something- On, on whether something is, has an adverse effect on the neighborhood, let's take this house here, for example. The siding on this house is current to probably nineteen nineties, not nineteen forties. So the siding's been replaced. Yet, it's on the register, as if it's a contributing property. From the street, if Frankie Welch is able to change her windows the way she wants to, and has the grids in them, I don't think you can tell the difference between what she has now, and what she wants to put in. But you can see her siding from the street, and so, in the wisdom of all these years, of this commission being put together, it's pretty sloppy. And it isn't necessarily the fault of the, of this Historic Preservation Commission, but the appraisals that were done prior to, they put houses in there that, they're calling them contributing houses, when in fact, they are not. And this is one. So if you could split a hair over the window, and you can, you know, live with the siding, makes no sense to me. There, there's just a lot of it, so. And I think, I think that gets to the heart of the whole thing. I appreciate what Jerry said about trying to become educated on this, because that's what I've been doing. But it boils down to this. All we do is give an opinion, based on a guideline. Then that same opinion, power of that opinion goes to Pier, and they consider it. But the, and then you get to consider it. But again, it's an opinion. There's not a set regulation anywhere that says, you have to do this, 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 and this, and you, and everybody has to follow, just like typical ordinance in Rapid City. It's not like that. It's all opinion-based. And you have to, in my opinion, you have to consider property rights. Property rights also carry weight, along with the historic preservation rights. And, and in your commission, if you just go out and drive the boundaries of it, and you go to the west boundaries of it, you're going to be appalled, because there's not a single house over there, that's, is going to be similar to a house on the boulevard. They're rentals, they're in poor condition, God only knows how many times things have been renovated on them. And so it's, it's not, this Historic Preservation Commission is not an easy thing. And that's why it finally boils down to opinion, and the final opinion is yours. And I would hope, in this instance, that you, if this was your house, just ask yourself, if this is your house, not Frankie Welch's, but your house, what would you want to do? Now, I've told you, and I've sent you emails, and I've explained everything I could, and everything I knew, and in my opinion, what she wants to do is an improvement to the neighborhood. It is not a detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay. I have a couple more questions for you. Was the siding replacement a consideration when the commission was looking at 1113 Fulton Street?
Only in this instance, that, that Pier would know that the siding is wrong, and that it's called contributing with the wrong siding. And so then, if you add the windows to the siding, now we've, we've added more weight to it, and that would make, that would give the Pier more argument to make it non-contributing.
I'd like to get Ms. Kessloff's opinion, if I may, if she's willing. I know you've had quite a bit of experience with this, and plus, living in a historic home yourself. Is it likely, then, that we do have some of these historic homes that are still on the register, but that are actually non-contributing, because of, I've heard it called sloppiness a couple of times?
I think we're going to find quite a few. There was not a building permit required for windows or siding until last year. So, the homes were put on the register, but changes were made to those homes without anyone's knowledge, because you didn't need a building permit. I think we're going to find quite a few.
How many homes do we currently have on that register?
I don't have that data with me, I'm sorry.
Okay. And I, ballpark?
No, I don't.
No ballpark? I heard you mention that there was no rot. I did, I did go by Frankie's house, I didn't notice anything, I did not go inside the home. But I'm curious, I could extrapolate that a little bit, and it would appear that we have to wait until there are components of our historic homes rotting before we're allowed to maintain them. Is that how far these guidelines go, or, because, you know, again, we have the National Trust for Historic Preservation recommending retrofitting, how do, how do you balance that out? What kind of criteria did you look at?
Well, let me first read you something from the newsletter information that Bill Freitag had given you. In that publication, it says, "This publication was developed under a grant from the National Center for Preservation Technology and Training, a unit of the National Park Service. Its contents are solely the responsibility of the authors, and do not necessarily represent the official position or policies of the National Park Service, or the National Center for Preservation Technology and Training." Retrofit is, you can get down to retrofit, but what they prefer you do is weatherize your windows, put, you know, appropriate storms on your windows, before you ever get to the point of retrofit. They prefer that you retrofit, rather than replace.
And I've heard that spitting storm windows can actually be quite a bit more damaging, is that taken into consideration at all?
I'm sorry, I-
That it's more damaging, as far as the historical status, the aesthetics of the house, if you will? Is that not true?
No.
How, how much is the financial position and the wishes of the property owner actually taken into consideration, when it goes through your, your committee process?
So far, we have not talked about numbers, like, it's going to cost me X amount of dollars to replace all of my windows. I do know that there is a dollar amount out there to retro, not retrofit, but to weatherize your windows, it runs about forty dollars, which is considerably less than if you replaced all of your windows.
Okay. I think that's all that I have. Thank you for answering my questions, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Charity, and we'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thank you. I have a question for Fred Thurston, I see he's in the audience, if that's okay. Fred, I know you served on the commission in the past, and you have a lot of building The question is, or what we're looking at is, what is, is this going to tip this house into a non-contributing structure, if the windows are replaced? I mean, I know you don't make the rules, but I was just wondering what you thought.
Yes, I believe, if the windows are replaced, it will be. There's several different components that one can do, several different ways one can restore a window. One's a good restoration, where you replace the counterbalances in, in the old double-hung windows, you replace weather stripping, you add new weather stripping, and you add storm windows. We've done this to many windows in the past. Matter of fact, probably the most energy-efficient building, the only LEED-certified historic building, is one that we did down at Swanders on Seventh Street. And a lot of those windows, all of the original windows that were there, still there, were retrofit, or, excuse me, were restored, and are weather-tight with new storm windows. There are cases where the window itself is difficult to repair, and retrofitting is actually leaving the frames of the window in place, and, and replacing the sashes. And there is a, a different mechanism, rather than the counterbalance, to be able to do that.
Do you have an idea of estimate of how fixing the window compares to, like, retrofitting?
I can tell you that in situations of my own buildings, that it was approximately half to two-thirds the cost of, well, excuse me. What, the motion that was made at the council, and I wasn't there that day, but when I went and looked at the minutes of the meeting, was to replace the windows, not to retrofit the windows. And those are two totally separate things. Replacing the windows, you know, restoring the windows are probably half to two-thirds the cost of, of replacing the windows.
Okay. So, I've, I've been sick, so I'm not up on this as well as I should be. Charity, do you have some insight into, into that part about the commission?
You know, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the language. It does say window replacement, but what we were presented with, and what we agreed upon, was retrofitting.
That's, that's a totally different process.
And that, that is what we put on, that's what we thought, the, the four of us that were on committee that day, thought we were putting on consent.
This middle requested a replacement of the windows, and replace them with aluminum clad, which is a metal window, not a wood window, which is another step removed from a historic window.
Okay.
If you want to have Mr. Freitag give a, just a quick, very quick, brief synopsis-
Okay.
-on the retrofitting, I'll yield.
Oh, I understand retrofitting.
If, if you look at the application from Frankie Welch, on the first page of the application, it says, "Replace windows," but when you get into the detail, where it's all in typing, it says, "Retrofit the window." And it was retrofitting the window that we discussed clearly at Legal and Finance. If, if the aluminum, and I'm not so sure the aluminum is, is maybe wrong or right, because we didn't specifically consider the aluminum, but the aluminum can be eliminated, or it can be clad with something other than aluminum, if that, in fact, is an issue. But I don't know for sure, right now, that aluminum is, is an issue for it.
Okay. Could I have a question for Ms. Kessloff, if she doesn't mind? Jean, I was at the meeting when we discussed this. It seemed like there wasn't a lot of discussion on retrofitting, as opposed to, what was your understanding at the meeting? That you were saying no to retrofitting?
At the Preservation Commission meeting?
We are at the Preservation Commission.
I was saying no to replacement.
Okay. Replacing them, as opposed to retrofitting them?
Yeah. There wasn't a lot of discussion on the retrofitting. There wasn't a lot of discussion of, mostly, I was presenting the prudent and feasible alternatives, because that is our job to do before we ever go to that point.
When you were, do you think if this came back to the commission, and there was a clear understanding on retrofitting, that it would have changed the vote?
I really can't tell. The standards are codified law in South Dakota, and the procedures are the same, whether it would, they would be requesting retrofit or replacement, you, you need to go through the steps to get to that.
Okay. So you're saying that you would have felt the same way, then, about a retrofit, as you did about replacing?
Absolutely, because that's the bottom line.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I certainly have empathy with the homeowner in this situation, though, but one of my bigger concerns is that we have a commission that is assigned to look at this, and I wonder what use or benefit a commission is, when every decision can be appealed to the council, and the council just overturns it. I, so anyway, I have concerns about that. So I'll be supporting the commission with my vote, and even though there's no guarantee that this home would become non-contributing, certainly, since it already has siding on it, I'm sure with the windows it replaced would be. So, anyway, I just ask my colleagues to think about that, that this commission, this local commission, is put in place to help the homeowners, because they can come to us faster, because the other source for them would be to go just directly to the state, and the state would then be allowed thirty days, whereas this commission meets a couple of times a month. So it's a faster process for the homeowners here, than if we didn't have it. So you need to think about if we're, like Mr. Wright has said, if we're going to support the commission, our local commission, which also the state agreed with them, or if we're going to be in the business of overturning every decision that they come up with. So that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure where to start with the questions, but let me start off with Mr. Freitag, if I may. You're on the commission, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I'm on the Historic Preservation Commission.
Did you have an opportunity to review the letter that came from Chris Nelson, to, from, it looks like it came to you folks as, as the committee, commission, excuse me?
Yes, I did.
And what are you reading in his opinion on that?
In his opinion, I, I, the first thing, when I got him on the phone, and after I read that, I says, "Did you understand that that was a retrofit, not a replace?" And he said, "No, I thought they were replacing the whole window." And so, things at Pier kind of went, went south from there, and then I, I told Chris that this was a retrofit, and I asked him if he was aware of what the National Historic Preservation Trust had recommended on retrofits, and he said he was not. So I then emailed him that link, and, and that same information that the councilmen have all had, I've mailed to you.
Did he respond to that in, in, in email form?
Yeah, he finally did, four days later. I mean, he dug through everything he could find, and, you know, there's probably stacks and stacks of documents you can go through, trying to, to justify what it is, your position. But he, I, I really think this, if everybody had known that the siding on the house already made it non-contributing, she could do whatever she wants to her windows, and that's a fact. But Pier, Pier did not know that. Well, they knew it from our commission, but they didn't know it prior to that. But the, it looks to me like it's, it's, you're just straining at a gnat and swallowing a camel, when you, when you say, "Well, these windows are going to be a detriment to this neighborhood, when, when they're not anywhere near as visible as the existing siding is" that is definitely non-contributing.
I, I just didn't see the follow-up email from Chris. Did I miss it, or is it not in the documents we've got?
I don't know. I don't know, Richie, whether you, whether Catherine linked those or not. The, the email he did, he sent to me four days later, he sent to me personally, so Catherine probably didn't have that one.
Okay. Okay. That would explain it. I, I'm not saying I read everything in detail, but there's one letter that, or email, that I didn't see. Was there, kind of switching subjects slightly here, was there some more discussion on a door as well?
There was. And the, I think the way the, if I remember right, at the commission meeting, was that it was determined that the, I think it was a wood door that's already there, and that the commission thought that that wood door was probably a better door than a fiberglass door that was proposed to replace it. That was, that was my position, and I said that at that meeting.
Thank you, Bill. If I can ask Jean Kessloff a couple of questions, if I may. Jean, you went through, if I heard you correctly, you made some recommendations for alternative? Do they show up in the minutes? Because that's what I was looking for, is the suggestions were made in there in the minutes. Okay. Thank you.
May, may I say one thing?
Yeah, hang on one second. Yes, and then I'll let you stay, stand by. That's what I was looking for, is the alternatives list that you recommended. The, the other part of it is, thank you, Jean, I, I'll, I'll leave that at that. Go ahead, Jean, you had one more comment, please.
I wanted to state that the house is contributing at this point. With the windows being changed out, it's what they call cumulative. And with the windows changed out, then it will be non-contributing. With just the siding at this point, it still is contributing. The siding was put on sometime after the house was listed on the register, but it's not enough to turn it over to non-contributing at this point. Is that clear?
There's another question that I have in there for you, Jean, is that the, part of it is to do with the, with that timeframe in there? To do with, what was it, the siding was put on, or installed, when?
I, I don't exactly, I don't have the, the notes of when the siding was put on, but the, the house was listed, the house is now, is contributing at this point.
Thank you, Jean. I'll yield the floor.
Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple, couple thoughts, additional thoughts on this, and, you know, one of which is going to the state law, and basically, with what- and basically with what, how they're making their determination is whether or not all feasible and prudent alternatives have been explored, and in this case, there's no deterioration. I think everybody feels for the property owner in wanting to make those changes. At the same time, again, if these changes are made, it is no longer a contributing structure, and then in the future, anything can be changed to it. And it can be even torn down and rebuilt into something else. So a lot of, we have to be very careful with this, again. Another thought being, we just had a presentation on recycling, that when we look at those windows that would be getting taken out and replaced, they would be going into the landfill and taking up space. And so that's another thing, when we look at longevity and long-term, if we're trying to preserve and extend the life of our landfill, that also is a good thing to look at, if we can rehabilitate a home. So I strongly urge you to support the commission and support the state on this one as well. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Let's briefly go to our city attorney, Joel Landeen. Joel, can you help us with the motion? My understanding is the intent of the Legal and Finance Committee was to mention retrofitting rather than replacement. Can you help us with what the motion should be to reflect that? Do we just replace the word replacing with retrofitting, or does it need to be more than that?
I don't know that it needs to be more than that. I think just so it's clear that what you're trying to say is that you're all right with the retrofitting of the windows, but not the replacement of them, then to insert that word into the motion.
And that's okay with the motion maker? Who is the motion maker? Amanda, is that okay with you? You were the motion maker.
Yeah, I don't mind using the word retrofit and going ahead and swapping it out for the replacement word in here, because as Charity Doyle said at the Legal and Finance Committee, we were talking, and what was presented to us was retrofitting that would allow the physical appearance of the windows to remain the same.
Okay, and that's okay with the seconder? And the seconder was John Roberts. So just so everyone's on the same page, the motion is now, now to allow the retrofitting, not the replacement. Everyone understands the motion? And we'll go back for further comment. Steve Lorente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was, of course, at the Legal and Finance meeting when this first came up. And I'm still a little concerned about the whole process and how it concerned with our local group. And then, of course, the state group and the information that was conveyed to them, and that may have been a miscommunication. But the hard part for me is to read the opinion of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And they ask the question, and their answers, their advice, where they ask, "Should I replace my older windows or retrofit them?" They don't go on to say, "All prudent matters should be taken in making sure that we're, we continue to use the older windows." In fact, it goes into saying, "Retrofitting extends the life of existing windows, avoids production of new materials, reduces waste, and preserves a home's character." This home has non-conforming siding. Probably the most visual part of a home, as we all know, that and the roof. So it's amazing to me that this house could be considered conforming and part of the historic group when the most visual part of it is non-conforming, yet it's considered part of it. And per the National Trust for Historic Preservation, retrofitting maintains that character, and yet adverse effect was found on this home because they're retrofitting, which is exactly what the National Trust for Historic Preservation suggests. So I'm a bit perplexed that the National Historic Preservation, and I don't understand how it's cumulative, because the National Historic Preservation doesn't speak to it as being a negative. It speaks to it as, speaks to it as a, an improvement which maintains the home's character, not as a negative. So I don't read where, I just don't quite understand. I understand all of the different sides of it, but it seems to me that maybe we're going a bit too far with some of the steps that we're taking in that we're wanting to use every part of the old window, when in fact, the National Historic Preservation says retrofitting is a very fine way to maintain the character of that historic home. And so I will definitely support this homeowner. It's unfortunate that the siding was replaced during a time that either they didn't know, or it was allowed, or I don't know if we know that, the definitive on what has happened with many of these homes. But I think all prudent steps have been taken by this homeowner, and I think the National Trust for Historic Preservation supports her. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. We do not have any further lights. The motion is to overrule the determination of the Historic Preservation Commission to determine that feasible and prudent alternatives to the window basically is to allow retrofitting, not replacement of the windows at 1113 Fulton. Everyone understands the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Wright. Lorente. Sasso. Clayton. Nordstrom. Scott. Peterson. Doyle. Lewis. Roberts. Motion carries, eight to two.
Thank you, everyone. Item forty-seven, Amanda Scott.
Item number forty-seven is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the letter of support for grant application for the Rapid City Area School District, the Carol M. White Physical Education Program. And I'll yield the floor to a motion, but I'd like to retain, to speak on this topic, so.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Nordstrom to approve, and we'll go back to Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I actually, I believe, just for clarification, this did come from your office, so the correspondence went to your office as far as asking for support on this request?
Yes, I believe so.
Then I'm just going to pose the question to you because it came from your office. Have we done letters of support with the Rapid City Area School Districts for grants like this before? Because, and the only reason I ask is because the contribution to the project just appears open-ended at this point. And so, since I'm new, I'm just wondering, have we done this in the past?
I believe the answer is yes. You've caught me a bit off guard with the question. But I believe that all the information is now linked. Part of the issue was, is not all the information was linked, but all, but the entire letter is now linked. So hopefully, it speaks for itself. If not, I'm not sure how to, how to help you out on that one.
Okay, because it really doesn't. It just basically says that they are applying for a grant, which we're all in favor of finding extra alternate sources of revenue. I don't have a problem with that. But it does say that they need support from five contributing partners in the community. And the municipality or the leader of the municipality is one of them. However, the letterhead that we're asking or authorizing you to sign basically states that the Rapid City Mayor's Office and City Council will provide information, resource support to the project as needed, and may look to expand specific involvement as the project moves forward. And that's the part where it's a little gray to me. If we, let me put it to you this way. If we were to expand the scope of the city's contribution, would that come back before City Council?
I think it would, but Pauline, maybe you can help us out with this.
I don't know whether to thank you or...
We do do support letters on a fairly frequent basis, but if it's a commitment of city funds, that obviously needs to be specified and has to come to the council. And we certainly don't do blank checks, so.
I would first like to preface all this with, the fact that I share Alderman Scott's concern, because I just read this recently, too. It is very open-ended, and it would cause me great concern if they expected the city to throw in money. And we're not aware of it at this time. Personally, I don't know if there's a timeline on this. I would prefer if the council would continue it to get further clarification from the school district. As, not necessarily in the letter, but maybe a side letter saying, "This is our expectations. This is what we mean by that." Something that says, "We are not looking for a monetary contribution." That would be my preference, but it's up to the council.
So how about this? A motion that offers a letter of support and non-monetary contribution? And then if, and if, and if it was the intent to ask for monetary contribution, that, of course, has to come back with the funding source. But certainly, we certainly wouldn't have sent something to the council that would have required, required funding without having an amount and a funding source. So if we want to clarify the motion, I think that's, appreciate you bringing that up.
I don't believe I can clarify it since I'm speaking, so I'll ask my, oh, may?
Was it your motion?
No, that's what I'm saying, it's...
Anybody's made a motion?
I made it. Oh, you did?
Would you like to clarify your motion?
Yes, we'll make it prove, as long as it doesn't include monetary contribution.
Okay, and that's okay with the seconder? So this is a letter of non-financial support, which is, I think, what the intent was all along. And that's okay with the seconder? Who is the seconder? Okay, Richie was the seconder. All right, and we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Substitute motion, continuing this item until the next council meeting, so we can get some clarification, if you would, please.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. We want to have this stop off at committee. You want to send this back to Legal and Finance? Maybe it might be better to...
Whatever is the most clarification, I mean, yeah, bring it back to Legal and Finance, wherever.
The motion is to take it back to Legal and Finance, and the seconder Charity Doyle is fine with that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? We are now talking about the substitute motion. Richie?
Mayor, usually there's a deadline on filing for grant funding. And I just wanted to double-check, and I haven't looked at it deep enough here yet to see if there's a deadline for the application to be sent in. Does anybody have that answer? I don't want to delay it, when a letter of non-financial support will suffice.
Richie, I think it's a matter of the wording. If this had required city funding, it would have had to have a funding source legally and an amount. We never do, do blank checks. That certainly wouldn't have been the intent. And my understanding is, is this came from the superintendent's office, I think, to my office, and then it was forwarded on for a letter of support, which we do fairly frequently. But, you know, as far as the funding, I don't think there is, there is funding, and there isn't an approval for a funding source. So it's up, it's up to you.
If we can, I'm very comfortable with the first motion, rather than delaying it, because we, I haven't, unless somebody else has found it in there, is there a deadline? Is there a deadline for meeting that? Nobody's finding it? Okay, I'll go with the, continues.
Bonnie.
Thank you. I think we don't know what the deadline is, and I think it's just punishing our, the school system, and more importantly, punishing the children that would benefit from this grant by delaying it. We're saying we're not going to financially support them, so I don't see that the council has any, has any, anything to lose. I would hate that if our police or fire department had some grant and they needed support from the school system, that the school system would hold it up. So I just don't see any real loss. Now, it is concerning that we didn't have the full five pages of this grant until this afternoon. And so, but I think we can handle those issues of things not being put on the agenda to the last minute in another way, instead of potentially punishing our children here of the city. So I will not support the substitute motion. I think we need to just move forward on this and support the school system. Thanks.
Ron Sasso.
I have the same concerns that Alderwoman Peterson has about this. And I do think that, as, we don't know the deadline, and often, grants are being pushed to the deadline. I think, as we already have a substitute motion on the floor, I think probably what we would need to do would be vote on that, and then in turn, go back to the original, or if Mr. Lewis would like to step forward, so. Thank you.
Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mayor. If you look at the attachment carefully, that's truly not the application. That is just the letters of the five entities signing off on it. I tried to do a Google search of it, of the grant program, and there's something wrong with the website. So we can't even pull up the information as far as what the, what the deadline is for at this time.
Let's go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It does appear, I do see something wrong with the website as well, but in the subscripts on a Google search, it does say the application deadline is April 12, 2013, so.
Thank you, Charity, and we'll go to Chad Lewis.
I withdraw my motion.
Motion is being withdrawn, is that okay with the seconder? Seconder needs to agree? Yes, okay, we're back to the original motion. Everyone understands the original motion? The original motion is to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign a letter of support, and there'll be no financial commitment, for grant application for the Rapid City Area School District and the Carol M. White Physical Education Program. Amanda. Okay, any further discussion? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, good discussion. We are now on, at the end of consent items. We're on non-consent items forty-eight through sixty-two. Can we have a motion, open public comment?
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Doyle, to open public comment. And we have several speaker request forms. We'll go to item number forty-nine. Mike Criz, on item forty-nine, on the flood area construction regulations. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. My name is Mike Criz. I live in eighteen Nebraska Street. I want to thank the mayor and council for the opportunity to address you this evening. I am one of the lucky homeowners that is going to find myself in a designated floodway come June with the revised FEMA maps. It came as a surprise to us. The neighborhood that I live in is on Nebraska Street. I have in my backyard, if you will, a drainage area that is a drainage easement. Thirty-five feet of it is mine. Thirty-five feet of it is my neighbor to the back, and that continues up and down that street. If you look at the map, the way it's drawn, the way my property is going to be affected, it's mainly due to the construction of, or lack of construction of this drainage ditch. It's better described as an alley. It is just a flat-type surface, a grassy surface that has a bit of a depression to it. And there is no purpose-built drainage to it. If you look at the flood maps, that continue east of my house, starting at Maple Street, and then even further on down to Parkview, the floodway is contained in what's looks like, or what is a purpose-built ditch. So my concern is, is that if I'm going to be put into this floodway, I'm going to campaign that things be done to contain the water or contain this ditch in my neighborhood. In discussions with city staff, it's been my knowledge that this is pretty heavy-handed tactics that's being handed down by FEMA to the city. It's a take-it-or-lose-it proposition. We've also had, as far as I'm concerned, a threat that if this motion is not approved by the city, that FEMA is going to withdraw any type of support if the city would experience a flood. This is a serious situation. There's plenty of things that are restricting on my property as far as improvements that I could do, trying to resell the property, et cetera, et cetera. You're going to hear from speakers after me that the flood designation for my property on Nebraska Street is exactly going to be the same as the flood designation along... the same as the flood designation along Rapid Creek. So, this, this is a serious issue. It's, it's going to be bigger than me, it's going to be bigger than the city, and it's going to be bigger than, than probably the state and on up. I've had terrific support from our council persons, from, from my ward, and I encourage you to listen to their, their advice also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Next we'll go to Tanya Fisher, also speaking on item forty-nine, the flood area construction regulations.
Hello. The first thing I'd like to do is make a motion to extend my three minutes and ask that you guys maybe consider that, so I don't have to do this twice.
Tanya, what we'll, what we'll do is, is we'll, we'll give you three minutes, and if you don't run too far over, we'll be fine with that. Otherwise, there'll be an opportunity to ask you questions.
Perfect. All right. Some of you have already heard some of this, and I'm just going to repeat, for those of you who haven't, my concerns and some of my questions. Our house, our neighborhood was built late seventies, seventy-eight, seventy-nine. It wasn't mapped then. We're talking six, seven years after a massive flood in Rapid City, but yet a neighborhood was allowed to be built that is now considered a flood zone, an AE flood zone, which is, as Mike said, the same as the Rapid Creek area down by the Civic Center and the Holiday Inn. My question is, why? Why was it allowed to be built? Why, why would that happen? And then thirty-some years later, I'm going to pay the price for that. All residential construction now, I understand, has to have certain floodplain elevations based, base flood. Was, was that done then? Do these people now get a choice to live in a flood zone versus I don't? Things now with, with the setup as of June third, as it comes through, is going to affect my property value, my resale value. Are my taxes going to change? Are they going to go down? Because who would want to buy a house now that's in a flood zone? Because I certainly wouldn't. I wouldn't be buying my home now had I known this. Last week, it was on the national news. Congress has told FEMA that they need to step up because they're not breaking even. FEMA then said, fine, flood insurance rates are going up. And that was announced nationally last week. It's already caught, going to cost me money no matter what I do. So, one of my questions is, is the city willing to step up and provide elevation certificates to us? Are, are city engineers available? Come out and do these? I've been told they're a couple hundred dollars. That's a couple hundred dollars more than I'm going to have to spend already on flood insurance. The concrete drainage that Mike talked about, why, yeah, why is our area one of the few that doesn't have one in that neighborhood? And what, what's it going to take? I know it's money, but I also understand that there are pre and post-disaster mitigation grants available from FEMA. I would think that that might be something we could talk about. Loss of life and property is something that gets mentioned all of the time. Well, why, why do I have to wait to lose a life or property before something can be done, such as the city stepping in and saying, we'll buy your house and make it a park? I don't know. These are questions I have. I'm going to quote Mayor Don Barnett from seventy-two. Remember, in the lowest areas of the floodplain, the land is now used for parks and recreational activities. No one sleeps there. I now am going to be sleeping in the same level as considered next to Rapid Creek. So, why am I sleeping there? Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. And we'll go to Lee Geiger on item fifty-eight. Item fifty-eight, which is the Art Alley item. Lee? Okay. We'll come back to him in just a moment. James Taylor, also on item fifty-eight. James?
I'm on the hall.
Oh, he's out in the hallway, too. Okay. We'll wait for just a moment.
Terry said there was a map in there.
And we'll go to Lee Geiger first, on item fifty-eight.
Good evening. Mayor and council members, my issue that I want to discuss, obviously, is about Art Alley. And, and to be real candid, I've not been able to attend any of the meetings that have come up after the first one that was at the DALL, so they may have, the artist guild may have some considerations with which I'm not familiar. My issue is larger, and I think that we have a way of solving this. When I read that there's some interest in declaring Art Alley as a public art work, I, I take some exception of that. I don't think that there's anything regulatorily that, that would allow for the city council declare private property to be a public piece of art. And especially when that involves the fact that other people would come and work on that private property that have no ownership or liability in relation to that private property. I think there's a real question there about the city's ability to avoid the regulatory aspects that they give to all of their issues that come up in a community. And so, what I just want to mention is that I've, I've developed and presented to some a methodology by which, for the city, it's as easy to live with in terms of regulatory standards as the historic district sign ordinance. And I would ask any of you that, as long as you've been on the council, when was the last time that something came before you that was an issue unresolved by the historic district sign board? And I know that from time to time, someone might come to the mayor's office and say, you know, these, these regulations are causing me a problem, I should have an, an end run. But, fact of the matter is, I don't think you've ever seen anything come from that or, that, that group. It's because we solve the problems, and if we do it simply. The method simply, it would be, if some, if somebody wants to paint on private property, specifically my building or someone else's Art Alley, all they would have to do would be come to the property owner, submit the artwork that they want to do on that building, have the property owner agree to have that artwork on his or her building. That would be one document. Another would be a release of liability, so that if something happens while that work is being done, that owner would have a release of liability from that accident. The third thing that would happen is that this, that, that with those documents in hand, that artist or the artist guild could come down to the city and get from the building department, just like they do, assign for the front of the building, a permit to do the work. All of that is very simple, straightforward. The city would not have anybody that would have to judge appropriateness. They would not have any authority other than to keep people that didn't have that, that documentation from doing work on the buildings. That allows the police to become responsible again for keeping people from working on buildings and being on buildings where they don't belong, limits the liability of those people. And so, in that respect, I will submit that information to each of you, and I would like its full consideration. I don't think there's anything in that that is contrary to the goals that the artist guild is, is wanting to present in terms of quality work.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
And we'll now go to James Taylor, also on item fifty-eight, regarding Art Alley. Good evening, James.
Hello, I'm James Taylor. And I, I did not have the, know anything about the Holocaust thing when I came here, but I have to say something very unpleasant. And that's that there's cultural prejudice and, and discrimination over on the other side the tracks. Well, it isn't on the other side the tracks, but it could be. And that's that Art Alley is a tourist destination, like Main Street Square. Yet, Art Alley, it's been said in here that it, it was the owner's fault because, of the buildings around there, because they allowed the painting on the buildings to happen. However, not one ticket has been issued for painting on those buildings. The Historical Preservation Commission hasn't said a thing. The police will not regulate in any way, shape, or form those buildings. The bid committee would not do anything about it. They brought it to the council. The council has passed it. And I'm saying that this is the other side the tracks. This is a prejudice that's happening because it's, it's the people that come to Art Alley, that are attracted to Art Alley, aren't the right kind of people. That's my viewpoint on this. Now, in this, when the, it was paved, Art Alley was paved, they said at the time, the city said, that they were going to clean it three times a week, keep it lit. That, the neglect from that tells the same story that I'm saying, that there's prejudice here. It's unnoticed prejudice, but there's a prejudice towards Art Alley that, that makes it to where it's not on, on the agenda. There's three million dollars placed in, on Main Street Square, fifty thousand dollar cameras there. For six thousand dollars of web cameras in Art Alley, it could be a safe place. For a hundred more watts on each of those lights, it could be well-lit in a tourist attraction. What, what Lee was saying, what the artists are saying, this will not, it will not make a difference unless we have this added security of more lighting and, and a small amount of money put into cameras there. And so, what I'm saying is, is that there's an unlying, underlying sense that this is not the upper crust of society that we're dealing with. We want to pass it off. The council wants to pass it off. The bid board passed it off. Destination Rapid City passed it off. Everybody's been passing it off. I'm saying that, look into this, please. I'm asking you that, that this needs to be a safe place for tourists to walk through at night, and it needs to be, it needs, if, if we had web cameras, there would be people that would be watching that all the time, and it would, it would change the whole atmosphere. Just these two little things, along with what Lee said, would change the whole thing there. I appreciate the art community. I think it'll help, but it's not the, not the end of the story. Thank you. I, I hate to bring this news, that I think that, that we have a prejudice and biased city towards Art Alley here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We do not have any further speaker request forms from items forty-eight through sixty-two. Did I miss anyone? Did I miss anyone? Pepper, if you could, could come up? We'll recognize Pepper Massey from the DALL.
So sorry about that. I think I had our electronic, our PowerPoint put in, and I probably didn't sign up. How do we get our PowerPoint?
Did you want to present an update on Art Alley during the item? Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Do you want me to wait then?
We'll, we'll recognize you during the, during the item.
Oh, see, I did this the last time.
All right. Any further speaker request forms? We do have a motion to close public comment. Motion by Lewis, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item forty-nine, Amanda?
Item number forty-nine is the first reading, ordinance number five-nine-two-two, an ordinance to revise the flood area construction regulations by revising chapter fifteen point three-two of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I yield the floor.
I make motion to approve.
Motion by Wright, second by Sasso, to approve. Any discussion? We'll first go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, the city has no real choice but to adopt this. However, this council and the mayor need to fund studies for these areas to look at all, if there's anything the city can do eventually to try to get them out of the floodplain. Of course, that, we need to find out from our citizens if they actually want these ditches and options in their backyard. So, I just wanted to make that comment that we are, we will need to be looking into that and see what options we have. Thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask, Mr. Brett Limbaugh, if you have questions?
You may.
Hi, Brett. When this was brought up during the public works, and a lot of the same concerns were aired at public works as they are aired now, I know that there was some discussion about, from Dale Tech, that there was, you know, there are solutions available, but it all costs money. And so, I, I guess one of the thing, questions I have is, since that was brought up last week at public works, do you have an opinion on if, unfortunately, a special assessment were to be assessed in order to put these viaducts or these drainage ditches, would that really offset the cost of the flood insurance that these people are going to be experiencing?
You know, I'm not even sure that that's a great question for me. Probably more appropriate for Dale or Terry to answer, but.
I see Dale in the, in the audience. Dale, you. Notice I just started with someone.
Go ahead, Dale.
Thank you, Madam President. That's hard to say. Without doing a study, trying to determine what size of facility needs to be constructed, and then we run into the property rights issue, is that easement that, that's there large enough to build a flood control project, to take these folks out of the floodplain? There's a lot of unknowns, so I can't really stand up here and tell you that the cost of, of building that flood control project would offset the cost of the flood insurance. My, my gut feeling is that we're talking millions of dollars for a flood control project. You know, certainly over twenty years, if you've got a whole neighborhood, that might be the cost of the flood insurance over that entire time, but it's too early to tell.
Dale, in the past, because one of the citizens did bring up that there, there were pre and post-flood grants that allowed some of the properties that were contained within a new flood area or a flood zone to be purchased by the city, and we have a lot of our parks there that's now doing that. Were a lot of those properties actually residential sites that the buildings were removed in order to create those public parks?
Yeah, I don't know the complete history behind the green space, but there was a special grant, if you will, or emergency dollars, post-flood that were used to purchase properties that were damaged, destroyed. There was some that were not fully destroyed, yet were purchased, moved out to create the green space. The only grant available today is called a hazard mitigation grant, and there are certain requirements for that grant, and the, the benefit-cost ratio has to be considered. So, for every dollar that you spend purchasing a property, you've got to be able to show that it's going to prevent at least that much in flood damage. And based on my experience with talking to the state, talking to FEMA, in most instances in Rapid City with these types of areas, we would never be able to get to that one-to-one benefit-cost ratio to be able to even qualify for those hazard mitigation grant dollars.
And those hazard mitigation grants are actually through FEMA, the same organization that is setting these firm maps?
That's correct.
With that being said, then, even if we could apply for those, it probably still would not remove, or the city through the grant program would still not be able to purchase all of the properties that actually have structures on them that are currently going to be in this zone?
Yeah, and it's actually purely up to the landowner. If they don't want to sell, they're not required to. I suppose there's some type of condemnation process that we could go through, but I don't know that that would be very successful.
Well, and, and again, you know, as one of the property owners said, the question becomes how valuable is the property when it limits the pool of people that may choose to live in the floodway? Any of these mitigations that we're actually talking about would also have the negative effect of lowering the property value, and that would affect the resale value as well.
Potentially.
All right. Thank you. I yield the floor.
We'll go to Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things, too, that even though this is something that I know we, on the one hand, aren't really thrilled about, you know, any of the flood maps, it's something that we do have to, have to deal with to be able to get federal assistance. Another thing that we've been looking at as a city is the drainage utility, and I believe that that is something that definitely needs to be explored as far as being able to improve our infrastructure when it comes to drainage, and ideally, hopefully be able to improve the city and make an impact. the city and make an impact down the road on that floodway, so, thank you.
Phil Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, sat through public works and listened to these comments. I've talked to Mike and to Tanya, I've visited the site, and as Mike points out, what we're now calling a flood easement is merely a flat area of grass. It's got basically no contour to it whatsoever. And when you look further to the east, there's, and it's difficult to describe, but it's just basically a V with some concrete in the bottom. It's not very fancy, it's not very deep, nor is it very wide. But when you look at the FEMA maps, that floodway is basically contained in that ditch. So it would seem that we don't need something very elaborate in an effort, then, to mitigate the exposure to these property owners. In round figures, there's about, just in that small area, there's about 50 homes that are affected, and even if everybody raised their hand tomorrow and said, yes, I'm willing to sell my property, I think it would be much more prudent and a cheaper effort to build some sort of a floodway ditch than it would be to entertain any thoughts whatsoever of the city, and I don't think we have the funds to do it anyway, to go out and buy all these multiple properties. And it goes without saying, when you have 50 properties, someone in that area is not going to be a volunteer to give up their home, that they've, you know, sacrificed and painstakingly given so much in an effort to establish. Dale, you're kind of hidden behind the podium, if you don't mind. I would like a suggestion for how we as a city, how we as a team here can proceed in an effort to, one, get a feel for the collective thoughts of those people who are affected. Many of them, as Mike pointed out, received postcards or whatnot in the mail, and they may have seen them, may have not paid attention, and all of a sudden, it seems that the bell has been rung, and now we have people who are aware that as of June, there is a big change taking place. Now, Mike has given of himself, and Tanya as well, to start a grassroots effort in that area to bring people up to speed in terms of notification and getting some discussion. One of the things I'd like to suggest, it would be a town hall-type forum in that area, and keep the topic just narrowly focused to this flood, flood changes through FEMA, the insurance, so we can get some information to these people and have one stop where they can come and voice their opinions and their concerns, and get some questions answered. And then, we as a city could gather information in that forum to see what people would like to do. You know, as Mike pointed out, 35 feet behind, and that's behind a fence, so they're not allowed to have any permanent structures in that area. So the area is basically void, and I would like to think that people would willingly give some of that property to development of a flood channelization that would help to mitigate their exposure, and perhaps even negate the need to have this flood insurance if, in fact, it was all contained in the ditch. So I guess my question would be, what can we do in the right way to proceed in an information gathering effort? And then from there, no doubt, we'd have to be talking about spending some money for a study and whatnot before we could proceed any further.
I think you hit on a good idea. You know, as far as getting feedback as to what FEMA's requirements are, we're pretty well locked into what they're telling us we need to do. So, you know, if people want to come and speak to, what do I need to do, or they have questions about what's going to happen, what do I need to do, we'd be happy to provide that information to them. And then certainly the discussion could be, would you be interested in supporting the city if a flood control project were to be proposed for any particular area? So, I think those are two things that we could certainly do if so directed, so...
And maybe somebody could make a motion for how we as a city could proceed in an effort to have said meeting, get some notification to all the affected people in that neighborhood so that we can at least offer an invitation for them to gather in a public place at a time that's convenient, so that we could begin an information sharing and gathering effort. And I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Answered your question. Alderman Scott is, Urban Renewal was a project that was back in the 70s that removed all the houses from the flood area. My father used to work for him, and I used to go with him out there and knock down old chimneys. Anyway, getting back to the point here, I guess, unfortunately, I have a quick question for you, Dale. Do you have any idea how many areas have changed, how many areas we have like this in the city that currently would have changed like this?
Well, there's about, there's about eight areas that, and they're all tributaries to Rapid Creek. Rapid Creek really didn't change that much because there was detailed information that was fairly recent. FEMA reviewed that information and didn't make changes to it. So it's the tributaries that feed into Rapid Creek, right in Rapid City, that are primarily affected, so...
About 400 new homes that are in the flood areas?
Well, 400 properties.
Properties, yeah.
Now, when we speak homes, there's fewer homes because some people's homes weren't included in it.
And some were removed as well, right?
That's correct.
How many was that, do you think?
Roughly 400.
Okay, so it's unfortunate, okay. All right, well, I have a, obviously, I feel strongly for the homeowners affected by this, it's unfortunate, but I think the problem is here, as a city, if we don't adopt this, we won't have any flood insurance in this city, and if a flood comes along, then we're going to be responsible for all the houses that just got washed away. Maybe I'm wrong on that, but I certainly think it would be very highly irresponsible of us not to adopt a federal regulation like, such as this one, so I don't know what else to say, but I think we have no choice but to adopt it. I do wish there was some other way to deal with it, but money-wise, I just don't see where we're going to have the money to do any major mitigation like that if you have eight different areas and 400 new properties coming into it. Unless someone's got a better idea, I'm going to have to move to approve. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Mr. Tech, a few questions for you. Could you describe the differences, so I can get a handle of what a flood zone is, a floodway, and a flood hazard? Have you got a definition for those? Are they all the same, interchangeable?
No, they're not.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because it is confusing.
A floodplain is the complete area that a 100-year, or a special flood, or the area of special flood hazard, they call it, encompasses. The floodway is just a component of that. It's, if you look at the new maps, it's a hatched area. It's a gray, hatched area. And the floodway is the area of highest velocity that is actually needed to convey the 100-year flood. Per FEMA standards, per city standards in this ordinance, you can encroach into the floodplain up to the floodway. You can put fill in there, elevate structures, and do some type of development in the floodplain. The floodway, you want to stay clear of. You don't want to do anything in the floodway, because that's where you see your high velocities and most damage at. So I hope that answers your question.
It does.
Okay.
Because some of these terms are getting tossed out there interchangeably, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that there is a difference between the three different segments. One of the things that's being discussed right now is the possibility of a flood mitigation program, some type of a process. I need to switch gears on you a little bit, in kind of the same vein here, is that we've talked about the current drainage cleanup, just maintenance to the current system that we have right now. Do you remember the cost for that projection estimate that you had? Is 140...
That's not a cleanup. The 140 million is to build all the identified facilities in the city of Rapid City to convey the city's 100-year storm, which is different than FEMA's 100-year storm.
Yes.
And it's not just maintenance. It's upsizing culverts, it's making larger channels, it's doing all sorts of improvements, providing stormwater detention ponds, so on and so forth. So, roughly $140 million price tag of the 21 drainage basins that we have in the city that have not been completed.
Would it be fair to say that this $140 million kind of gives us an idea what these eight tributaries that you were, isn't that what you said, eight tributaries within the city? That's about how much we would have to spend on that for mitigation?
No, we have 21 tributaries for a $140 million cost. I can't say right off the top of my head what the eight, what improvements would need to be done in the eight tributaries that I described earlier.
Thank you, Dale. Because what I'm hearing you say right now is that we're shrinking the area of impact, but the cost is still going to stay relatively the same. Meaning that the homeowners, if they're assessed, we are reaching or going towards a smaller pool of homes that would be assessed.
I guess I'm not following your line of questioning.
Sure. Let me see if I can rephrase it a little bit. We've got the concept out there of doing a flood channel, okay? Putting a concrete ditch through all of these major flood zones that we have right now. That's going to cost X amount of dollars.
Correct.
Okay? The entire impact of that flood zone is going to be limited to just these residential properties that are adjacent to this flood zone. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
So the dollar amount per household would be dramatically increased if it is just those houses that are assessed?
One thing to keep in mind, though, is that channel behind their home provides a regional benefit to people upstream and downstream, too. So it's not strictly for their own benefit. It's to provide stormwater conveyance from the upper part of the basin all the way to the outlet at Rapid Creek. So, it's not fair to say that if we build a channel, one-half the cost gets assessed right to the adjacent property owner. It should be distributed amongst the basin, because the entire basin sees a benefit of that project.
Okay. And that's where I come up with the question again, to follow up, is that going to be enough of an offset for the change in the insurance premiums?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
Thank you, Dale. I know you can't. So, I just wanted to make sure I was on the right track, okay? The other part of this is, the folks that have an opportunity, would they please take a look at a website called floodsmart.gov? There's a lot of, lot of questions that can be answered there on that website. And the ones that I'm particularly concerned with in my area is, on the East Mead-Hawthorne drainage area, is that there's a significant amount of homes that are going to be impacted by this. I just, I can't remember the exact number of what it is, but there's a significant number, and I'm going to throw out a number, it's something like 90 homes in this area that are affected, just in the drainage area of East Mead and Hawthorne ballpark, okay? What I'm concerned with is that not all of these folks have seen this information. We've also got rental properties in this area, and so I'm not sure exactly what that translate into people that rent. Can you assist us in that area?
We sent initially postcards to property owners that were affected or had changes. A lot of the East Mead Channel, Hawthorne Channel area, they were already in the floodplain. So some of them won't see a change necessarily. So they probably didn't receive a postcard, or we just sent letters three weeks ago to all 800 folks. So, I guess I don't know how to notify renters without going door-to-door or knocking on the door, and I guess, as far as I'm concerned, that's an issue between the renter and the property owner.
Sure.
And I don't know that...
I'm getting my walking shoes ready to do that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Dale. The other part of this here now has to do with, I did speak to an agent, an insurance agent, and there's, so this is only one opinion, so I would recommend that folks have the, take the opportunity to visit with other agents that they have insurance through, because, am I correct, Dale, that FEMA more or less sets the rate, and the insurance rate, insurance agents are the brokerage for them?
That's correct.
Thank you. The other part of that is, are you, and this may be an unfair question to you, Dale, is that, are you familiar with the mortgages that have to be, require flood insurance?
Any federally-backed mortgage requires flood insurance, be it a FHA or a VA, and there may be some others there, and also the, for instance, a credit union, if they loan money, they may require flood insurance, too. That's up to them. They probably want protection, want their loan covered in case something does happen, too. But as far as FEMA is concerned, if it's a federally, if there are any federal funds in that mortgage, you're required to have flood insurance.
Correct, yes. Agreed. And then, according to this insurance agent that I was referring, speaking to, is that if they, we, the citizens, buy the insurance through the insurance agent, there's a 30-day waiting period. Did you hear that?
I can't speak to that. I'm not familiar with all the insurance requirements. That's certainly on FEMA's side, I think. That sounds about right, but I can't speak to that.
The next ingredient on this is if they are required from their lending institution to have flood insurance, then they don't have to wait for that 30-day window. Did you hear that also? No, you're not familiar with it. It's probably an unfair question, Dale. But anyway, that's the information I was getting from the insurance agents, so I just wanted to verify it. The other component that I have in my neighborhood is we have people that have gotten reverse mortgages. And again, just to clarify, for those folks, we urge them to wait for their lending institution to contact them, rather than you going to the lending institution because of that 30-day window. And again, not everybody is required to have that flood insurance, but primarily if they have that opportunity to hear what their lending institution has to provide them for information, then they don't have that 30-day window period. That's all I've got, Dale. Thank you very much. Appreciate your patience.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Dale, sorry, a follow-up question. I had one other one, I was checking my notes here. One of the property owners on Nebraska also mentioned an elevation certificate. Could you please explain what she was referencing?
Correct. Part of the requirements for the way flood insurance now is going to be issued is the amount of risk that they have. So it's based on your, the elevation of the lowest floor in your home, based on what the flood water elevation is. So you're required to do an elevation certificate to show what that lowest floor elevation in your home is relative to the base flood elevation, and that's how your insurance rates are set, is the difference, you know, the relative difference in your floor elevation and the flood elevation. So that's what Tanya was referring to.
And Tanya, when she was referring to that, she said it was roughly $200 to have someone do. Is this a one-time certificate that you have to get, or is this an annual certificate?
It would be a one-time certificate.
A one-time certificate? And when she made reference that the possibility of having the city's engineers be able to provide this, are they qualified to provide something like this?
There's one person in the city that's capable of doing that, and he's standing at the podium.
With the look on your face, I figured it was you, Dale. But there's only one, then?
That's correct.
All right. And so, in order to get someone else, if the city only has one person available, how many other qualified people are in our area that actually could provide this service?
There are dozens.
All right. And then, another follow-up question. When you were explaining the difference between floodplain and floodway and everything, just for clarification purposes, there are no structures in the floodway, correct? Or are there?
That's the intent. There are structures in the floodway, in the city of Rapid City. There are in any community, because if they were old, they're non-conforming, and they can be allowed to stay there. We don't have anything that says you must remove your structure from the floodway. But if they go to make certain improvements, they can only do certain things. They can't expand it, they can't make it bigger, they can just do maintenance items on it, so...
Okay. And just for, I'm making sure I've got the right term, as Alderman Nordstrom was referring to, to make sure I've got it in my mind. was referring to, to make sure I've got it in my mind. When I say floodway, that is the most fastest, direct route that the water will be carrying through.
Correct.
And so, just for clarification, we do currently have some structures that are actually in the floodway.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Dale.
You're welcome.
Go Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, I wanted to clarify, I didn't realize until I heard Alderman Lewis speak. I was not at all trying to suggest that in lieu of approving this, that we do something different to help these people mitigate their exposure. I'd like to be proactive and do that alongside, but I fully support adopting this because it's what we need to do, so, but I would like to see us as a team help these people, and the other areas as well, in Rapid City, to get the information to the affected people and help them along in whatever way we can to make appropriate decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor for approval of first reading. Before we proceed to the vote, I would like to request that several items be attached to this when it comes back forward for a second reading, hopefully available prior to committee, so that the council and staff in the community can have access to this information. First of all, if you look on page eighteen of the Flood Memorial booklet from last summer, it references the floodplain policy recommendations adopted by the city council on July seven, two thousand and eight. Would like that information linked, the, those recommendations. One of those recommendations includes acquisition of additional property along the Rapid Creek floodplain, and adopting and updating management plans for the floodplain. The other thing that needs to be linked would be the floodplain policy information that came forward in two thousand and nine, and that's PW two zero zero nine zero seven one four. It came through July fourteen of two thousand and nine, Terry. And if we can make sure that that's, that that's linked. And then also, I think, and this is very important, a map of what's coming out of the floodplain and what's going in. So, if we could make sure that that information is linked when this comes back forward.
Any further discussion? Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe it's in that same booklet that's in there, but if it isn't, and it's very closely related to that booklet, is that we have information, and I'm going through the Journey Museum, getting that information, it says it will, another flood will take place, and it's not a matter of if, it will take place, and they have historically taken place here in Rapid City, and the real uncomfortable part about this whole thing is that we know what's going to happen, and we just don't know when precisely. The other big factor in all of this is that the archaeologists, I believe it's archaeologists who do this research, is that they've found floods that reached, you know, twenty, thirty feet in depth through this area, so just want to, and that's not going to help us anyway, for whatever, but just know that it is going to happen. It will happen.
And before we proceed to a vote, Dale, one more question, because this has been on the minds of several people who have talked to me about it. Did FEMA make the decision by coming here and walking the floodplain, or the proposed floodplain, or did they sit at a desk in Denver and drink their Starbucks and make the decision? And I mean, that's a question that I've been asked, and I think that's a legitimate question, because if they made the decision from, quote, "on high," then I think that there needs to probably be some further discussion. But if they actually came here and looked at the elevations and the studies, then that's another story.
I guess I don't know for sure, but here's what I would speculate. This all started back in two thousand and two or two thousand and three. These areas that we're talking about had flood mapping. They had what was called a Zone A, which was just an approximate area where someone back in the nineteen seventies probably said, here's an area that's at risk of flooding. And so, through this map modernization process, through the mandate that Congress gave to FEMA to update all the flood maps nationally, they looked at those areas in town that were already mapped with the Zone A, with the inaccurate stuff, and said, we're going to update those, and that's what they did. I don't believe that they sat, someone sat in an office somewhere and just arbitrarily picked areas to say, we're going to do this area and do a detailed study on it. I truly believe that they took the existing areas that were already mapped and just updated and provided better information.
Thank you. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And Dale, just wanted to take this opportunity, because you've handled yourself with great grace, and I know this is a difficult subject, and all of us are sitting up here, and you're like facing the Spanish Inquisition here, and you're doing a marvelous job, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'm Dutch, by the way. No inquisitions.
You're Dutch.
No inquisitions. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to approve first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifty.
First reading, ordinance number five nine one eight, an ordinance to amend the term and fees for pawnbroker and secondhand dealer licenses by amending section five point three six point zero three zero and five point three six zero four point zero four zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Lewis, for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-one.
First reading, ordinance number five nine one nine, an ordinance to amend the term and fees for security guard licenses by amending sections five point five two point zero six zero, five point five two point zero seven zero, and five point five two point zero eight zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Lewis, for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number five nine two zero, an ordinance to amend the term and fees for taxicab licenses by amending sections five point six zero point zero seven zero, five point six zero point one four zero, and five point six zero one point one five zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Peterson, to approve item fifty-two, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number five nine two two one, an ordinance to amend the term and fees for adult-oriented businesses licenses by amending sections five point seven zero point zero five zero and five point seven zero point zero seven zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Peterson, to approve first reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-four.
First reading, ordinance number five nine two three, an ordinance to amend the term and fees for trenching contractor's licenses by amending section thirteen point two four point zero four zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, and an enthusiastic second by Chad Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-five, Jerry Wright.
Fifty-five is a request by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for Walgar Development Corporation to consider an application for a preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located south of East Minnesota Street, east of Maple Street. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Wright, second by Laurenti, to approve with stipulations. Item fifty-five, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-six, Jerry.
Item fifty-six is a request by Renner Associates LLC for Parkview Estate LLC to consider an application for a preliminary subdivision for property generally described as being located east of Parkview Drive, south of Minnesota Street. I make a motion to approve with stipulation.
Motion by Wright, second by Lewis, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-seven, Amanda.
Request from Jackie Geico of the Native Sun News to print city council minutes. This was continued from March fourth, two thousand and thirteen council meeting. I'd like to make a motion that this item be considered for the two thousand and fourteen budgetary process.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second by Wright.
May I retain the floor?
You may.
Thank you, Mayor. And may I present a question to Pauline Sumption?
Sure.
Pauline, this is a little out of the blue, and you may not have the answer, but I was just wondering. It seems to me when we were talking about this discussion, there was a possibility of maybe taking, because they had requested the minutes specifically, there was a possibility of taking like four sessions of minutes, March, June, you know, September, and comparing to see what the actual cost would have been if it had been published in the Native Sun News. Was that ever done? I know you've been extremely busy.
I guess that was never relayed to me, so I didn't know I was supposed to be checking into that, so I apologize. I missed the committee meeting that this went to, so...
And that's not a problem. I think the current motion will take care of it, but that might be just something, just to bring an update back to us, just so that we can do that comparison again between the two.
Okay.
Thank you, I yield the floor.
Any further discussion? This is not direction to include, this is direction to consider. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We've had a request to move up items sixty and sixty A, and we have someone who isn't feeling well that's involved in the presentation, so unless there's opposition from the council, we'd like to go to item sixty first and then sixty A, and we'll come back to fifty-eight and fifty-nine. So, item sixty is the Compass Independent Audit Annual Report to the City Council for year ending December thirty-one.
Thank you, Mayor Quaker, members of the council. I'm Kellen Kelly, Chief Auditor of the City of Rapid City's Compass Audit Program. You'll have to excuse my voice, I've been pretty ill lately. We provided you through the link a copy of our somewhat belated two thousand and twelve annual audit report that is required by our ordinance. We didn't have a lot to report, because we had no items, no audits completed, therefore no recommendations to report to you, but I did try and give you an overview of the audits that were underway as of the end of the year, and a little update as of the end of last month as to where we are, and I'd answer any questions you might have about the annual report at this time.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Lewis to acknowledge the report. Do you mean to adopt, or? Kellen, do you need a motion to adopt or approve, or just to acknowledge? Does it matter?
I think just to acknowledge. The ordinance says we're supposed to provide you with a report, it doesn't talk about approval.
The motion, then, is to acknowledge, and a second by Lewis, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're on item sixty A, this is the cash handling audit report. Kellen.
Thank you, and we provided you, after the Compass Audit Committee considered and approved the report, we provided a hard copy to each of you for your consideration and review, and I just wanted to explain that the reason that this report is not linked up is that it is general practice in the audit community and under our standards that the governing body receive and consider the report, and then you determine when this becomes a public document. So, if you determine that you want these linked for meetings in the future, we will do that, but we didn't want to overstep our authority at this point.
Go ahead.
I was going to make a motion.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Peterson to release the report and have it linked. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm assuming that means it'll be linked to the agenda for tonight, so it'll be available. Very good. And we do have copies available tonight if media or anybody in the audience would like a copy on item sixty A. Go ahead.
And Kellen, I wanted to thank you for all the work that you and Sarah did on this. I would like it, and the only reason I made to release this one is I actually like being able to receive it first, and then we, as a council, can choose to release it going forward, so I appreciate the option, and I appreciate your integrity.
And that is sort of general practice in the audit community, so that you get, you get to consider it before you're inundated with requests from the public, so, and if you have any questions concerning the contents, I'd be happy to answer those tonight as well.
Thank you, Kellen. Get well soon.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom, you had your light.
Mayor, this is probably a question for you. Kellen, thank you very much. There was a lot of recommendations in this packet, and maybe for the audit committee members that are on the council, because I don't want Kellen to spend any more time up here. There was a lot of recommendations within this packet that we received ahead of time. Are we going to be implementing any of those recommendations very soon?
I believe, Pauline, if you can help me out with this, I believe some of them have already been implemented, and some, we're going to, you'll be taking up to six months to implement. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, in the back of the report, there are responses from all of the department heads that were affected by the audit, and it should detail it in there, what's already been implemented, what they're waiting on. I know one of my items, I said they'll probably take six to ten months to implement, and then another one was like thirty days, so I think it just varies depending on what the recommendation was.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
All right. Is it the wishes of the council to take a brief recess, or keep going?
Keep going.
Keep going? Okay. Item fifty-eight is Art Alley Discussion, and Pepper, you have the floor for a brief presentation.
Well, it may be briefer than we imagined, because I don't think we have a PowerPoint. Do we have a PowerPoint? We do? Oh, we'll talk fast. Hopefully, all of you have the opportunity to read the press release that we sent out updating you on what we've been up to, how we've made progress. We had a meeting last Wednesday with the artists from Art Alley, and had a great turnout, and from that meeting, we're calling it Guild Two Point O. It's not your grandmother's art guild. We came up with a mission statement, an artist manifesto, and some core groups that are being formed. Do you want to take it real quick, Tyler?
Sure, so Guild Two Point O has been formed, and we've made some progress so far as to, where'd my picture go?
Uh-oh.
Hello? We have a short.
Mayor, have his...
Did I bump something? This?
Did you do it? I think we've been sabotaged. There you go. Okay. So, just, yeah, just use the...
Okay, so, so far, what ground we've covered, I'm going to highlight some of the points that we've worked out, and we created a mission statement, just to kind of clarify to the public and to the artists what we're in support of, and we tried to really keep it to the essence of it, and it states as follows. "It is the mission of Art Alley's Artists Guild to keep Art Alley sustainable and innovative tool for our community. We do this by building relationships with building and business owners, artists, and the community. We act as a support system for all parties involved in Art Alley. We utilize the talents of the community and the guild to develop each component that is necessary to helping Art Alley flourish. We do this in recognition of the fact that Art Alley is a powerful community tool that gives everyone not only the possibility, but the inspiration to do amazing things." Here is the manifesto that we created. We put it together in nine points. This is a print version, however, we do have a social media version as well. The purpose behind it being nine singular points and having a social media version is the ability for us to be able to share above and beyond just our own base, but to have points and things that can inspire other people and make them want to share this vision as well. And we've kind of purposed these points as a rallying cry to people to take hold of and become a part of, as opposed to a set of rules to abide by, and I think in that manner, we're going to get a lot more cooperation from the public. So, they state, "We believe that we, what we do for ourselves will die with us, but what we do for others will live on. We understand that our work impacts more than just ourselves, and so we strive to leave behind something better than what was left for us. We do this for the next generation. No matter how profoundly you've messed things up in the past, you have the ability to make a difference today." have the ability to make a difference today. See you later." "Art Alley is for art. If you're just here to write a comment on the wall, consider starting a blog or Twitter account, unless you can do it with style. We respect all artists and artwork. We do not destroy our brothers and sisters' efforts. We only paint where we are prepared to make equal or greater effort. We do not believe in censorship, but we do believe in respecting people's feelings, and so we don't leave behind things that negatively affect the children who see our work. We act as ambassadors of Art Alley. We welcome the community and treat them as our family when they enter this creative sanctuary. We respect and appreciate the building owners who provide our city canvas and the businesses that operate around us. Each one teach one. You are responsible for passing on the code of conduct to the next generation through mentoring and respect." As of our first guild meeting on March twenty-seventh, we began forming core groups comprised of artists and community members to focus on getting specific tasks accomplished. These are the areas of focus. Web development and social media, creating a stationary site where all information is accessible to the public and artists, continuing to spread our message and efforts through social media. Maintenance, regular maintenance of Art Alley, cleaning and removing vandalism, documentation, creating an interactive three-D application that chronologically documents the important work in Art Alley, promotion and funding, developing new arts-oriented events and programming to enhance and support Art Alley, and a mural project, developing a program that uses grassroots social media efforts to fund large-scale murals through community donations. This raises the bar for what is possible, inspires artists to create their best work, and gets the community involved and excited. And this is an ad that we placed in Sunday's paper, thanking the building and business owners for their willingness to work through these challenges with us.
And we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Pepper and...
Tyler.
Sorry. Anyway, first of all, I'd like to say, you know, I do really appreciate the fact that the art community is reaching out and trying to work with all the stakeholders involved. Everybody's working together. Obviously, this didn't happen overnight, and it's gonna take a while to get it straightened out. It's not something that you just do magically, and everything's better. So, I do appreciate everybody's talking to each other. That's a lot better than it was before. I will say this to some of the property owners in the House, that this obviously is a property rights issue, sir. So, if you don't want people writing on your building, by all means, you should, you know, I don't know, get it cleaned up, and then next time someone writes on your building, you're gonna have to call the police and tell them to turn them in, because that's about the only way that the city can do anything about it. At this point, I meant what I said earlier today in the paper came out. I don't, I don't think the city really can do much about this. There's not, I mean, I don't want to sound like we're not trying to do anything about it, but it's a really complex issue. These are private buildings. These are not just building that, these aren't city, these aren't city properties. So, for us to step up and say, "You can't paint on that building," unless it's property owners complaining, there's really no reason for us to do that. I don't know how we can regulate that at all. I guess I've never seen this as anywhere described as a citywide art project. I think it's just something that's organically growing and hopefully is being fixed now with people talking to each other. I do understand there's concerns out there from the property owners, and I, hopefully, they can work on those and work on the opt-out issue, which we've talked about before, for the building owners that don't want this. Vandalism does take place, but it takes place in all of the alleys. I know that I talked to Mr. Sefner. He has a building on the other side of the property, other side of the street, and has a, it's not Art Alley, but he has vandalism on his property. But he's taken measures to try to mitigate that as much as possible. I think that Black Hills Power has gone through, and they've cleaned up all the lights. They've replaced the lights and made it brighter in Art Alley. Hopefully, that's making a little bit of a difference. And they've said that if they have to, they can put in bigger light bulbs to make it brighter and more visible and help deter more, you know, any vandalism or crime that goes on back there. And one thing I will take a little issue with is the idea this is a prejudice going on in this alley. To mention that even today after the knowledge we made earlier and mention the Holocaust in the same sentence, I think is completely disrespectful, and it serves no one any purpose, and I really don't appreciate those comments. I will tell you this much, there is no one here that's anti, has a prejudice against the artists. It's not from my perspective up here. I think it's more of an issue where we want, you know, what's best for everybody, and we're not gonna get in the middle of it, because honestly, folks, this is not our property. This is not city property. And the idea that we're gonna put cameras in, who's gonna watch them? Who's gonna monitor them? And who's gonna pay for them? This is private, I can't, you know, the city can't be putting up cameras on private property and watching the alley. We already have the police department that does a pretty good job. Like ninety percent of the calls that are in Art Alley right now are police-initiated, officer-initiated calls. Alderman Wright has made a great suggestion of having city vehicles drive through on their way back to the shop, you know, as a way to deter more, have higher presence of people, more eyes on the ground. I think that's another great idea. But the fact of the matter is, I do appreciate the fact that people are talking to each other right now. They're working on the problem, and I don't see, I mean, I'm not trying to dodge the problem, but I don't really see where this is a city issue. I understand if you have a crime being committed on your building, then you need to call the police. And that's all I can say. You need to make sure that's well understood. This building is not allowed to be painted on. And that's about all, beyond that, I don't really see what we can do. I do appreciate the fact that Chief Malteverne and his crew have stepped up and offered to clean the building, clean the alley twice a year with hoses. Think that'll make it a little nicer down there. Yeah, and then personally, I expect you out there, by the way. I don't think you're putting other people on that job. But other than that, that's all I really have to say about it, and I'm not trying to offend anybody. I just want everybody to work it out as best they can, because otherwise, I mean, if it's your building, clean it, and you don't want anybody tagging it, call the police. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Chad. We have three council lights. I'd like to go to the first one who's willing to offer a motion to move this discussion forward.
Hello.
We'll go to Charity Doyle.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge, and I would like to retain the floor, please.
Okay, we have a motion by Doyle and a second by Laurenti, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Pepper, how, was there a consensus building amongst the property owners during these discussions about some of these ideas?
There was. We had, oh, God, I would say probably close to fifty percent of the building owners were at the meeting. We went door-to-door and invited everyone. We were hoping we would get a larger turnout. The consensus was, they felt it was unsafe, would like more lighting, wanted the cleanup conditions to be improved, and if they didn't want their building touched, then they should have an opt-out. One of the reasons that we're working so hard on Guild Two Point O is to build consensus with the artists as well, and make certain that they're clear that the property owners have the right to say what they would like on their building. If they choose not to have art, and that would be the important word to keep in mind, if they choose not to have art on their buildings, then the artists will respect that. However, vandals are going to vandalize, and it's different from art. So, we have to keep that in mind and make certain that we don't try and join the two together, because art exists in the alley. With vandals, doesn't mean it's the same thing. So, we're hopeful that people can understand the difference. I think that there's been discussion that the police driving down the alley on their way home, hopefully more foot patrols. The building owners stated over and over that they felt that foot patrols made a difference in that alley, and that there weren't as many foot patrols last year as there had been in the past, and they felt that it made a difference to them. So, if something could be done to bring police back in there on foot, they felt that that would make a great deal of difference. Black Hills Power was in there almost immediately. Several of the lights were out. The majority of the lights were out, and that made an immediate impact in the alley. And I think by working with the artists, continuing to talk with building owners, we're hopeful that we can have a meeting with Mr. Geiger and talk through some of these things, and certainly listen to his thoughts and ideas, and share those with the guild as well. I think it's gonna take steps. It's, as Mr. Lewis said earlier, this didn't turn around in a day, and we're not going to get it back on the right track, but we are working hard on it, and we're focused, and I think we're making some good progress.
Now, with respect, one concept that you raised this evening that I'm intrigued with is raising money for the murals. Here's what I would challenge you to do. Raise money, but a portion of that, first and foremost and upfront, is dedicated to these property owners to help make some of the repairs that have been done, whatever that may be, to put up the lights and the cameras, to do these different things that they've been asking for. I think that would be a major step in good faith, that you're willing to take those contributions that you're raising to help mitigate the damages to their properties. So, I would ask the guild to consider that. Thank you.
And we're looking at grants as well, at something on that scale. The other part of having cameras there isn't simply for security, which is important, but also to document the art in the alley.
Sure, but I would like you to consider it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Jerry Wright.
I have a couple of questions, but the first one is, have you had Lee Geiger involved?
We've invited him to the meetings. He did come to our first meeting, and we were able to hear his comments there and spoke to him afterwards, and we're hoping to...
He's made some very good comments tonight.
Absolutely.
And he's one of the reasons we have his to Art Rapid City, so please utilize his talents and his genius and all that stuff to help you get where you are. It's a good point he brings across. But I do agree with everyone that that's primarily private property. All the right-of-way is ours, and policing is ours. We've all talked about how we're gonna do that. Botheres me that we have people climbing on roofs and damaging roofs and fire ladders that may have been put on in nineteen-ten and have been checked since, and on and on and on. Those are security, safety issues, liability for the building owners, and we need to be concerned and work on all that. But I have observed that alley for probably, what, it's been on, what, close to ten years, right? Eight, ten years? And I really liked it when it first started. In the last couple of years, something changed. And there's another culture in there I think you need to find, get it out of there. I'm not sure what it is. I have a hunch, and I won't say, but something changed down there. Instead of having good art, we've seen vandalism. We've seen expression that I don't think is necessarily art, and I think it's damaged the whole thing. So, I think we need to find out what that element is and get rid of it. I really do. It's counterproductive. It's dangerous, and it's causing problems. And again, anything we can do, we will do, but it's really up to the property owners, and I hope their rights are respected and they're part of the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Pepper, have you had any discussions with Terry Nelson on this as well?
Well, I rang him up right before the building owners' meeting and personally invited him, and he wasn't able to come. And he said at that point that he'd said enough, he'd spoken his piece, and I assured him that we heard him, and we were working on some of his thoughts and ideas.
I appreciate your responding to him, Pepper, because he's really bent my ear as well. The other part of this has to do with the property rights of the people, and so it comes down to the point where if this property is getting maintained, then I'm gonna be looking at the people that have unauthorized access to those points on those buildings be treated as vandals, and we'll have to do the, whatever law enforcement needs to be done to that. And how do we get there at that point? I don't have an answer for that at this point. Catching them in the middle of the act of doing something like this is gonna be challenging. Thank you, Pepper. Appreciate your hard work on this. Keep it going, and I'm sure there's some more information.
Thanks very much. However, I would also say that the, we would applaud your efforts to stop vandalism in the alley. It isn't art. Destruction of property isn't what this movement is about.
Thank you. And we'll go to Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Pepper, for you and your staff and support of the artists for all your hard work on this and the effort with trying to have the businesses as involved as possible and, you know, having your manifesto points there and addressing the needs of the business owners and the opt-out, I think is very, very important. And, you know, I understand, you know, I think this is, it's something that, I'm impressed with how far you've gotten it already, just because I felt that it was going to fall back into the council's lap very quickly. And so, I'm very pleased, very impressed. And the other thing that I think is important, just for all council members, if you haven't made a trek down the alley recently, please do so. A lot has changed. A lot of artists are working very hard to get it back, back up to a much higher quality again, and it really, it really is changing very quickly back to how it should be. So, definitely appreciate all that, that hard work. And typically, the difference between the artists and the vandals, the artists, when they're working, they're not shy about working. They're working, and they're there for a while. The vandals, you know, they're not there for long. They're running and going, so. But thank you again.
Thank you for noticing, and I would say, it's only been thirty days, and I think we've made some good progress.
And we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I had one question, Pepper, if you could, and I want to thank you guys for doing this. I am too one of those people that wanted to be hands-off, and I'm more than willing to take the heat for that at any time, because I think the best solutions are gonna come from this communication that you guys are continuing to do. But I wanted to echo what Alderwoman Doyle said about the cameras. I think that's an extremely important one, not only, I think, to protect the artwork, the real artwork that's gonna be done down there, that's already been done down there, and that's going to be done, but for the property owners as well. And of course, the property owners are gonna have to say, "Yes, go ahead and put a camera on my building," but it would seem to me that we have Thursday night deal coming up, on Thursday nights, the summer nights, that you could work with some of those people. Now, I have spoken to a large number of citizens who love Art Alley. They're concerned that the city's gonna get involved, which is why I don't want us to get involved. They're concerned that we're gonna get involved and ruin it, and I think there's a potential for that. But I think that the summer nights thing would be a great opportunity, where there's gonna be a large gathering of people who like to visit Art Alley, who like that concept, who might support some sort of fundraising, who would donate towards efforts to get better lighting. It sounds like the lighting's getting better, but the cameras, it would seem that that would be a good time to fundraise, maybe. Ms. Shuan, could, you guys can get with her and work that out. I'm sure that would be a great possibility, and there's a large gathering of people where you can raise those funds. So, but I appreciate your effort, and I think you're moving in the right direction as well, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion to acknowledge, and no further lights. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifty-nine, acknowledging the fiscal year two thousand twelve annual report. Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that this is a very preliminary report, but because of state statute, I have to give you at least what I have today. I will be continuing to work on this. If you look at the statements, you will see that there is no depreciation expense yet for the enterprise funds. One of the major things that we have to do is still the fixed assets, and so that's the reason for that. So, again, just very preliminary. We will continue to work on this, so the auditors can come in the end of May.
Pauline, when is this coming back?
It will actually come back after the audit is complete at this point.
Which will be?
They have to have it done by September thirtieth. It's usually in August when they get done with it.
We have a motion to acknowledge the preliminary report by Nordstrom and a second by Lewis. And Amanda, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can make a friendly amendment to that, I will, if we can add, approve the preliminary report but ask for an update in thirty days, or roughly the first council meeting in May.
Sure. Will you have an update for us at that time? Okay. And that's okay with the second or it's a friendly amendment? Okay. Motion's been amended. Everybody understands the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sixty and sixty A are done. Bids. Bids.
We only have two bids for you tonight. The first one is for custodial services for the Rapid City Parks Department, and I'm not sure why the document camera's not working. There we go.
Hold on just a second.
The bid was received from Black Hills Works in the amount $67,000 annually for years 2013, 14, and 15.
We have a motion by Laurenti to approve. Do we have a second? And this is, and a second by Roberts. And this is less than the last contract, right?
That is what Mr. Bigler has said, yes.
Okay. All right, and it's to be noted, there's one abstention Ron Sasso requested that he abstained from this before he left the room. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One abstention from Ron Sasso. 62.
62 is for the Silver Street area utility improvements, Phase 2 on Gold Street. We received three bids on this item. Recommendation is to work with RCS Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,100,040.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Laurenti for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Items 63 through 70 are public hearing items that do not have any speaker request forms. Do we have a motion to open public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Laurenti, second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can we have a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Would anybody like to remove items 63 through 69 for separate consideration? If, Chad said all of them, we're not gonna take them seriously. Do we have a motion to approve items 63 through 69?
Sub move, second.
We have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 70, this is Yellow Robe Enterprises doing businesses Dakota Liquors, 418 Noah Drive for a package off-sale liquor license. Pauline, what's your recommendation?
I would request that you approve this with the stipulations attached in the memo.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Scott to approve with the attached stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 71 bill list. Pauline.
There are no changes to the bill list, so it is $6,567,710.3.
Motion by Laurenti, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Motion by Doyle and second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.